Good evening, everybody, and welcome. For those of you who are watching at home or those here in the audience, the School Committee has just returned from executive session where we discussed collective bargaining strategy pertaining to the Boston Teachers Union. We will now continue with our regular School Committee meeting. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. If anyone wishes to sign up for public comment, please see our School Committee staff member, Ms. Lena Parvacs, out in the main hallway. Sign up for public comment will close at 6:30. A quick note, our next School Committee meeting will take place next Wednesday, September 13th, not September 30th as previously scheduled to avoid a conflict with Rosh Hashanah, which begins at sundown on September 20th. So as I said, our next School Committee meeting will take place next Wednesday evening. We'll move on now to the approval of minutes. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with other handouts. If changes are made, you may access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 19th, 2017 School Committee meeting as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Dean Robinson, if you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing now the minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang.
Thank you, Chairman O'Neill. Good evening, School Committee. I have many updates to provide today, so bear with me. There's a bit of echo, so just want to... Okay. So I want to start off by just welcoming everybody back to a new school year. It's...I hope everybody had an enjoyable summer, relaxing Labor Day. I want to take a moment to recognize all the teachers, all the school administrators, all the custodial staff, nurses, and everyone that just has been all hands on deck to make sure that we have a great opening tomorrow morning for grades first through 12th grade and for kindergarten on Monday. We also know that tomorrow is the opening day of the Patriots' season, Week One. And that's always important to note, right?
Let's hope both are successful.
Yes, both will be. It's been a very busy summer. We've prepared...we've been doing a lot of preparation for 2017-2018 school year and can't wait to kick it off tomorrow morning. I'll be visiting several schools tomorrow morning along with the mayor and be visiting many schools in kindergarten opening on next Monday as well. I want to personally thank each and every one of you, to all...I should say, to all the parents that may be watching. I want to just personally thank all of you for choosing Boston Public Schools. You place great trust in us by providing your most precious to us, and they will get an excellent public education here in Boston Public Schools. In BPS, we truly believe our young people will be the leaders, the scholars, entrepreneurs, innovators, the advocates of tomorrow. As a district, as a city, we...our goal is to make sure 100% of our young people graduate from Boston Public Schools, being ready for college, career, and life. But we know we can't get to that mission unless we close persistent opportunity and achievement gaps. That's why the values of equity, coherence, and innovation guide our day-to-day work, and they shape our decisions. And it is essential, and part of that, and actually most essential to that, is making sure that every single school and every single classroom is safe, welcoming, and sustaining for our students. We are very proud that we have a school system that's racially, culturally, and linguistically diverse, and that's why we work so hard to affirm and sustain each young person's identity. And whether you are returning to Boston Public Schools this year or you're a newcomer to Boston Public Schools, we want you to know that your young people will be embraced. Our teachers care deeply about ensuring that every single student flourishes. And regardless of your race, your immigrant status, you will be welcomed into Boston Public Schools, and you will receive a high-quality education in Boston Public Schools. That's what BPS stands for, that's what Boston stands for, and that's what this country stands for. I want to take a moment to talk a little bit about some exciting things that will be happening, that will be happening new in Boston Public Schools. We obviously make it a key priority in BPS to provide our students with healthy and appetizing meals to help fuel their learning throughout the day. And we know that some of our students, the meals they get in our schools are sometimes the most nutritious, if not the only meals that they get throughout the day. And we know that through studies and studies and studies, students learn better when they are not hungry, and that's why I'm really excited about the partnership we have with Revolution Food. Revolution Food is our new vended food vendor. They will bring all-natural delicious meals to 85 of our schools currently that do not have kitchens, full kitchens. And Revolution Food is committed to providing wholesome ingredients that will be free of artificial colors, flavors, sweeteners, preservatives, additives. They will not use high-fructose corn syrup. They will...all the meals will be freshly prepared. They will virtually eliminate the use of frozen food in Boston Public Schools. So very excited about bringing them as a new partner into BPS. Also, this year, we're really going to be ramping up our Breakfast in the Classroom project, and Breakfast in the Classroom is an initiative that makes it easier for our students to access this vital meal during the day. So we'll be partnering up with...we have been partnering up with the Eos Foundation. We currently serve breakfast in classrooms at 17 schools, but our aim is to expand to a minimum of 50 schools this year. And for decades, BPS has been providing students breakfast, and for the past four years, at no cost to our students regardless of income. But we know that only 39% of our students currently participate, and that means 31,900 students are not getting this important meal. So we're committed to expanding that initiative this year. We also are going to be expanding our work around excellence for all. I've talked about excellence for all throughout last year. Thank you, School Committee, for your commitment of $715,000 to expand excellence for all in the 13 schools to fifth grade. So we're very, very proud that we are going to be able to continue to expand rigor and enrichment in these 13 schools that have excellence for all. We also, this year, are expanding our Extended Learning Time Initiative to additional 30 and I schools. So 15,000 kindergartners through eighth-grade students will receive an additional 120 hours of learning time, which is equivalent to 20 added days. So in a short time of three years, BPS will now have fully implemented extended learning time in 57 schools serving over 23,000 students. And this will allow our teachers more time for creative and project-based tasks that obviously are more engaging to our students. So very excited about, like, full implementation at ELT. And I just don't think people recognize, like, these three short years we have implemented this in 57 schools. Also, last budget cycle, the School Committee did also approve for increased funding for our students experiencing homelessness. I've had the opportunity to walk some schools and see how schools are thinking, how are using this funding and just...I know some of you know about Katie's Closet. It's so exciting to see Katie's Closet actually really expanded in BPS. McCormack has this beautiful room completely ready to go now for students who may be experiencing homelessness. This $1.2 million investment will be targeted, and it will support the 3,000 students that we know are experiencing homelessness, and we know that there probably are a lot more other students as well. So thank you for that important investment. Some highlights from the summer I want to make sure I share with the School Committee and the public. I want to start off with the fifth quarter of summer learning. We know how critical it is to stem summer learning loss, and that's why this summer we launched in collaboration with Boston After School and beyond the Fifth Quarter Learning. And the Fifth Quarter Learning is an approach of blending academics and enrichment together. And I want to share this very staggering statistic. The average daily attendance in our fifth-quarter sites this summer was 85%. And this was even more shocking. For high-school summer programs, the attendance was 93%. I actually asked the team to go back and double-check these numbers. I was like, "That's staggering." But many of our partners that work very closely with BPS schools created some really innovative programming for young people, and young people, when the programming is engaging, they show up, no matter how far it is, whether it is on a college campus or it's on a boat on the way to Nova Scotia, they show up. Hardly not to show up, I guess, if you're on a boat. But just incredible, incredible work. Also, the Exam School Initiative, we continue this year. Participation this year increased. We had 720 students participate in this summer prep program for the ISEE. This included 349 students out of the 720 coming from our underrepresented schools. And this is a large increase from 2016, where we had 646 total students and only 225 from the underrepresented schools. Even more importantly, for black students, the percentage increased from 10% in 2014 to 23% this year, and for Latino students, 14% to 33% during the same three-year period. So very proud of the work of the Opportunity and Achievement Office and this kind of targeted approach they had to our underrepresented schools to get these sort of results. And a couple other highlights from the summer. We had summer graduation for 190 BPS students from about 19 schools over the last couple of weeks, and we actually have four separate August graduation ceremonies. I think it's always important for us to recognize our students who are committed enough to making sure that they finish their credits and then actually graduate this summer. So congratulations to the 190 additional BPS students who graduated from BPS this August. This summer, we did a lot of professional development. Oh, the person who is responsible for pictures, I apologize, I did a little bit of jumping around. This...yeah, this summer, we did a lot of professional development for our teachers and our administrators at both our August Leadership Institute and our inaugural Teacher Summer Institute at Boston University, where we trained 600 teachers. We took the opportunity to launch some very important work called our Essentials for Instructional Equity. In your packets, School Committee, you will see this document. It's called our BPS Essentials for Instructional Equity. It is a culmination of about two years of work of developing four competencies that will support every teacher in BPS to close opportunity and achievement gaps and prepare our students for college, career, and life. We launched this work during the summer at our August Leadership Institute and our Teacher Summer Institute. We got some great feedback from teachers. The teachers in BPS actually led these workshops, and when we surveyed them at the end of each one of these sessions, the average rating through that week was 9.2 out of 10. And so over the course of the year, we will offer follow-up sessions and support to school leaders in coaching, giving feedback on the essentials. The Summer...the Teacher Summer Institute was a joint effort between BPS and the Boston Teachers Union. For us, this was...we've never...I've been told we've never done this scale of training, at least in very recent memory. So thank you for...to the entire Academics and Student Support Services team. Thank you to the Boston Teachers Union. For folks that may be watching, if you're interested in knowing more about this work, and you will hear more about this work from years to come, you can go to our website, www.bostonpublicschools.org/essentials, and I'll take you directly to a website that will have videos and a lot of toolkits that will give you more information about the essentials. And for teachers, we'll have a lot of resources for you to access as well. Next highlight during the summer. Last Tuesday, I had a great time, as usual, meeting our new kindergarten students at Countdown to Kindergarten, hosted by the Boston Children's Museum. School Committee member Jerry Robinson was there, Mara Walsh. We had a number of BPS staff there. We actually met nearly 3,000 kindergarten students and their parents. And now this event is in its 18th year. So I want to thank the Office of Engagement, our Department of Early Education for doing a fabulous job, and obviously always want to thank Jerry Robinson for her commitment and her visionary work with the earliest young people in BPS. So some pictures for you to see there. Next highlight during the summer. We worked very closely with the Massachusetts School Buildings Authority to do some upgrades to our schools. I think we shared...I shared that information with you last year. We're nearly complete with our windows projects in BPS. So $40 million, we've spent nearly $40 million to replace over 3,000 windows at seven schools, and I personally have visited these seven schools over the last two weeks. We also did a lot of repair work with roofs and then boilers at five other schools. When you get an opportunity, visit some of these schools. They...these schools literally look like brand-new buildings with these windows. This is part of...this is part of our ongoing collaboration with Massachusetts School Buildings Authority. We obviously will continue working with the MSBA as we roll out Build BPS. Also during the Summer August Leadership Institute, we gave our principals their allocation for the 21st Century Furniture Fund. So every single school will have a certain amount of dollars that they will be able to invest in 21st century furniture and technology. So that's kind of the first big push to get...to access the $1 million investment, $1 billion investment in Build BPS. So that was just a sample of some furniture that the principals got to see. So they now all basically have a little card with a dollar amount that they will be able to start investing in this furniture. Yeah. And they will be working very closely with staff and parents and the school-side councils to make these purchases. So this will be a collaborative effort at each school. Next item, Hurricane Harvey. I just want to take a moment to express some deep thanks to our schools and our school leaders for basically responding to a call to help our brothers and sisters in Houston. Last week, I reached out to the Superintendent Houston Independent School District, Richard Cronzo, who I've known for many years, and offered up an idea of matching BPS schools with Houston Independent School District schools. And our target is 100. Our principals have reached out already and connected with principals in Houston, and most importantly, we want to provide some emotional support. So depending on the school, students may be sending other students notes, there may be video messages from classrooms. I heard from one school today that they requested for stuffed animals. So the school, I think it's the Sumner, right? Is bringing together stuffed animals to send down to Houston. I kind of did an all-call out to our principals, and they literally started raising their hands last week. I want to share some powerful words from the deputy superintendent in Houston, who wrote in an email to me. "Our city needs some form of normalcy, a safe learning environment for our students where they can count on a meal and take their minds off their most recent experience is much needed. Please keep in mind when speaking to your principals that our principals have not yet been able to walk their schools. They may not know what they actually need as far as support. I do know that it will mean the world to them to know that they are not alone. Your principals will be that ray of sunshine beaming through our dark clouds." I'm just proud to say that over 50...actually, as of today, 58 of our principals have signed up to support a sister school in Houston, and despite all the challenges with starting their schools tomorrow, they're taking the time to pick up members of another school community. So if we can give them a round of applause. Next update. Yesterday, as you know, the Trump administration ended the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals program, known as DACA, which since signed as an executive order in 2012 by former President Obama, has helped over 800,000 so-called Dreamers to secure in-state tuition, work permits, and obtain social security numbers. I know a number of Dreamers personally. We have many BPS alum that are accessing colleges and universities in Massachusetts with in-state tuition, and I know we have Dreamers who are educators in Boston Public Schools. That's why it was so important for me to be pretty vocal on this issue. I joined the mayor, Attorney General Healey, Senator Markey, and others at a press conference yesterday denouncing this decision. And yesterday, also, the Boston Teachers Union President Jessica Tang and I released a joint statement urging Congress to pass a legislation that provides a pathway to citizenship for immigrants. I would like to share a few passages from that statement. "We stand shoulder to shoulder in fighting for the continued protection of all Dreamers, those law-abiding young people who have come to this country, often through no choice of their own, and have grown up and been educated here. These are hard-working students, employees, and even members of our militaries who enrich and strengthen our communities. Eliminating DACA would drive them into the shadows, depleting our schools and our workforce for unproductive members of our society who simply yearn to pursue their dreams and fulfill their full potential. Boston educators remain as committed today as ever in continuing our work to protect and uplift all students, families, and communities." It does go on, but I do want to just share a personal reflection on this. I don't think, as I said earlier today, this decision does not reflect the values I grew up with as an immigrant in this country. It sends a raw message to our young people in this country, and sends a raw message to our global community. I know in BPS, we will continue to embrace immigrants. There are young people from 139, I believe, 139 different countries that now call this city home. When I grew up in America, I was watching Coca-Cola commercials with people holding hands and singing together. And that's what I thought this was all about. And so to all the Dreamers, I want you to know that we will continue to fight for you, and I know this School Committee will continue to fight for you as well. And lastly, just two last quick updates. This is for the general...more for the...the first one's more for the general public. I want to announce that the application for our exam schools is now actually open, and for the first time, it will be online this year. And so instead of filling out traditional paper bubble forms, families can visit the exam school website at bostonpublicschools.org/exam and register your child immediately for the ISEE. And later on during this meeting, we'll talk about pushing back the deadline for families for residency verification to give as much opportunity for young people to sign up for this exam. And I will conclude tonight by just saying again, I'm really excited about starting the 2017 and 2018 school year. I'm excited that I'll be joined by the mayor and the Chairman O'Neill and BTU President Jessica Tang and others. We will be greeting families, we will be visiting classrooms, we will be tasting our new food. I will be going to Irving...I'm going to start at the Irving tomorrow. I will head over to Young Achievers. I will also head over to Excel and Brighton tomorrow, and then I will be spending some time at the Blackstone for lunch. And then on Monday, I'm looking forward to starting our first day of kindergarten at the Mattapan Early Elementary School, and it is going to be the first of seven schools which I will visit on Monday. And at the Mattapan Early Elementary School, we will be launching our first-ever K-1 Haitian Creole classroom. 25 young people will be starting their education in BPS in that program. I had the opportunity to visit that classroom today, and it already gives me goosebumps that we are starting the program. So very excited to be able to do that on Monday. So welcome back to the school year, everyone. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. I hate to start with a correction, but in fact, your first visit tomorrow was not to a school. Where were you going to be at 6:00 AM tomorrow morning?
We will be at a bus yard.
Great. Thank you. So...open it now to questions and comments from committee members. Mr. Locanto?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Superintendent Chang. First of all, as the parent of three children in the Boston Public Schools, I am also very excited for the startup school tomorrow, as is my wife. So thank you for welcoming us back. I just wanted to remark briefly on two of the extracurriculars that you've engaged in over the last few weeks, and I call it extracurriculars because it's certainly not something that you're required to do by your job, but I think you have a moral compass and urgency in addressing things that affect us as a society. And so, you know, certainly the leadership that you've shown on DACA and the city's response and the school district's response and partnering with the union on that is, you know, reflective of, I think, the views of this committee and moreover, just the response that you've seen from our city and our leaders. And so I deeply appreciate that, and I think many others in this room do as well, as well as in our district and our city at large. And then the other thought is around Houston. You know, certainly, you know, I appreciate the fact that you've asked for applause for everyone in the district that's done so much to contribute money or supplies or give their time and volunteer to partner with schools down in Houston. But, you know, that took leadership, and that took initiative, and so your effort to reach out to Richard Cronzo and partner with Houston ISD was certainly, you know, exemplary and reflects well on the city and the way that we come together in times of crisis. And so I just wanted to appreciate that. And I think unfortunately, as a product of Boston...excuse me, Broward County Public Schools in South Florida, we might have some new districts to partner with in coming weeks with the impending storms bearing down. And certainly within our diverse community within BPS, we've got many families that have family members from Caribbean islands that are currently about to be hit by Irma. So, you know, we're sensitive to that, and as we've been in the past and we will be again, we'll rise as a community to support one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locanto. Any other questions or comments? Dean Robinson?
I too just wanted to echo the excitement that we have for the startup school. I want to thank you for all of the updates from the summer because the work that took place in the summertime with the students, with educators, was really remarkable. So thank you for giving us that extensive list of just accomplishments over the summer. And I too want to echo Mr. Locanto. I don't know who's more excited about tomorrow. I don't know who's more excited about tomorrow. I actually have all four of mine in Boston Public Schools this year, so I am through the roof, running to the bus stop tomorrow, running. I will bring back my track days. I'm so excited, you have no idea. So we still have, you know, some fun things to do tomorrow morning to get ready, but I will be joining you at some of the different schools. I know some of the other committee members will be visiting throughout the next couple of days. It's an exciting time. I did read a post, though, I just have to mention on social media that there, there is a thought that sometimes teachers get a bad rap during this time because, you know, they are hearing from, you know, the teachers, well, good luck, teachers, this year. And I want to give a shout-out and highlight how excited I've seen teachers, you know, for this upcoming school year, coming to the August Leadership Institute and seeing the principals, the cheering that took place when we walked in for the principals and the school leaders. I just want to applaud the teachers, the school leaders, the custodians, the nurses, the parents, everyone who's getting ready for the school year because it's an exciting time. Our kids are excited. Some will probably have to be kicked out of the bed because there's no more of the late nights, but I just want to really set the tone in applauding our teachers and getting everyone excited about the school year. I'm also really grateful for the leadership you provided to Houston that we will probably provide to Florida and to our neighboring islands and the support that they're going to need because we've seen that Boston does come together during these times and we become Boston Strong, just not for our city, but for others as well. And our teachers take the lead. The students want to send notes and send stuffed animals. And so thank you for giving us, you know, that insight of some of the needs that the Houston children are looking for us to provide because I think that our students will step up because our teachers are excited to teach our students empathy. So thank you for the updates. Please continue to keep them coming, even anecdotally, because it helps me know even how to parent my kids and, you know, my kids' friends to show empathy to our neighbors when they're in need. So thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? Yes, Ms. Oliver Davila.
I ditto what everybody said. I don't want to repeat, but I had a question in terms of everything that's been happening in our country over the past few years. There are some conversations that I feel could be great for our students to have in school and just wondering if there's a plan to talk about DACA, to talk about immigration, to talk about the recent marches. And just, I think, as a way to continue the conversation and Boston to be a leader. I mean, we've seen you, we've seen the mayor, and I ditto what Mr. LaCanto said. I mean, I feel like that is going above and beyond, and I just, I want to say thank you. But I also hope that it's a great opportunity for us to have these conversations in our classrooms with our students and teachers and families.
Teachers have really led the effort in basically saying these conversations need to happen in our classroom. Our young people need to have these discussions. Yesterday, in the joint statement with the Boston Teachers Union, we also included links to resources to parents, to educators. These, this work is not going to stop. It's going to be ongoing. I know our team is collecting, continuing to curate more resources for schools, for our families, and to make sure that we're also doing this in a respectful way and making sure the work is being translated in different languages. So yes, the work is ongoing, but it is, a lot of our teachers are the ones that are really saying, we've got to step up and we have to be the ones helping to lead this work. So I actually really want to thank our, the teachers in BPS. I'm, I feel like I'm following their, in their footsteps here.
That's great.
Okay.
I look forward to hearing more.
Thank you. And, and I also just want to comment, tomorrow is a big day, opening of school. And I am personally aware, as the committee is, of how hard you and your team have worked all summer. We have been in here with all of the school leaders in this. This is the first time the School Leaders Institute was held here instead of off-site. I personally met with all the new school leaders, a group of about fifteen to eighteen this year, that I was extremely pleased for two reasons. One, it's the smallest group in a number of years, so there's more stability now in our school leaders. And two, the vast majority of them graduated from BPS and/or have taught in BPS. And I was absolutely overwhelmed by that, and I was thrilled because for years, we've had folks say, well, there's no pipeline and you're not moving teachers up into positions of leadership. And was really excited to see that. This was a group of experienced, a number of them are working on their doctorates, they're committed to public education, they practically, they all had masters, and really encouraged by this group of new school leaders that we have this year. And what this, between that and the ones that have added the past couple of years, really excited by the crop of school leaders we have right now and the energy in this particular room when all of the school leaders were here along with the lead teachers was palpable. And Superintendent, you and your team have put in place a number of changes this year. We've had some changes to transportation, bringing in innovative ideas, working with an MIT crew in how we can start to look more efficiently at transportation. We have a new food service provider for a number of our schools. You've already mentioned the buildings that have new windows, those of us who have visited schools where you can't even see out windows or they can't open, or you hear through but you can't see through. This is exciting work, and there have been a number of changes. I know you've been personally on top of all of them. Like you mentioned, you've visited every building that have had renovations. We're opening a new school building tomorrow, which is the Elliott, one of the Elliott Buildings, Elliott School Buildings. The Dearborn is well under renovations and will be finishing up this year, so we have, we have a lot going on, and I thank you for that. I also want to echo and publicly state the strong support this committee has had, and several members have already mentioned it already, for two particular things you did this summer that, as we said, were above and beyond the job description. One, regarding the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, the decision made by the president's team, and I guess the president as well, though he personally didn't announce it, and the impact that will have on both our students and our staff and how strongly you have reached out about that. And Superintendent, this is important for the public to know that the school committee 100% is supportive of your actions on this and your statements. We are completely behind you on this. We feel very strongly that our students who are impacted by this and our staff who are impacted by this, the school committee and the district are completely supportive of you and will all in our power with this regard. And the second thing is Superintendent, other members have mentioned this as well, and I like the way Mr. LaCanto phrased it about your moral compass showed through in what the immediate actions you took regarding our colleagues in Houston. And I was actually traveling overseas with my family when it happened. I was a couple of days late catching up on the news, and I immediately reached out to Richard Caranza, our mutual friend, and apologized for being so late and reaching out to him. He told me, don't worry about it, Dr. Chang is all over it, and we got a great plan in action. He was deeply appreciative of what you immediately did. And I know a number of other council grade city schools have reached out to Houston as well. It's, we are an organization that supports each other. Richard Caranza, for folks who don't know, the superintendent in Houston was formerly the superintendent in San Francisco, has been very supportive of Boston Public Schools over the years and has been very helpful to us behind the scenes in a number of questions on key issues. So it's nice to be able to repay the favor to an excellent man and an excellent organization. And so Superintendent, I want you to know how supportive and appreciative this entire school committee is of those actions that you have taken and above and beyond while still ensuring that school opens on time strongly tomorrow for all 57,000 youth in our care. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
So if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing now the motion carries. Move on to general public comment. I do want to acknowledge as well that we are joined by Councilor Asavi George, the vice chair of the City Council's Education Committee. Thank you, Councilor Asavi George, for joining us this evening. And we'll move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allowed an additional two minutes. Speakers may not re-sign their time to others. Large groups addressing, addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or select a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have eight speakers this evening, beginning with Councilor Anissa Asavi George, and she'll be followed by Tom Carco and Sylvia Goldman.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. I want to echo what everyone said about just the start. Say again?
You're excited, too.
I am very excited, yes. That's, that's exactly what I'm going to echo, too. And really just give some general wishes for a great new school year and so excited to send the boys off tomorrow. And just really recognize and thank Boston Public Schools for taking such great care of my kids over the years and, of course, starting tomorrow again. But I do have to say, as a former teacher, it is always an exciting time of year to sort of start. It's, you know, you get New Year's resolutions in January, you get to do them again in September. And I would say this is the time of year that I miss the classroom, kind of, sort of, because I do know that all of my teacher friends are getting excited about the classroom and sort of cleaning and preparing and getting excited for the fresh new year. And with, with that in mind and referencing the comments about our concerns around DACA and our children, our students in our schools, that we as a district remain committed to supporting our teachers and our staff that are also not sure how to respond in so many cases and that we remind our school personnel and our school staff to do some self-care and to really, that we understand and respect and appreciate the pressure that they feel as they respond to the needs and the fears and the anxieties about our students that are before them every day, knowing that there are so many instances where we can, we can offer assurance, but can we truly ever offer safety, with the exception of the time that they're in front of us in our school buildings? So that fear doesn't go away. And I, through my years of teaching and conversations with my friends that are in the classroom and in the building, not just our direct teaching personnel, the pressure that they feel and the anxiety that they feel and that they internalize because they are putting on the brave, strong faces for our children. So I'd, I'd like to remind all of that, just sort of generally in public, that our teachers are feeling this pressure as well, and we need to remind them for self-care. And we should encourage that as well. I did want to just come very quickly this evening to share a few of my hopes for the coming school year with my work on the, on the city council and just reflect quickly on some testimony that I gave earlier this summer regarding breakfast before the bell at the State House and really, breakfast after the bell, I'm sorry, and really supporting that effort to make sure that our kids are appropriately nourished in the classroom. But then also remind, as our schools move to an extended day and a longer day, that we're also giving them the nutrition they need to sustain that day. When we add 40 minutes at the end of the day, my boys will be out of school at 4:10, but lunch is often very early in the day. What, you know, what acceptance, what exceptions are we going to make to food in the classroom policies in our school buildings? We want to make sure our kids have the snacks so they can sustain the day. But very specifically to some of the work that I'm doing at the council, BPS residency is most important to me, or not most important, it's all important to me. But as we start the school year, our seats should remain for Boston kids and making sure that our residency policy is as strong as ever. And I look forward to this new policy for students taking the exam for our test schools. Very excited, as I've got three boys preparing to take the exam school test that'll all be online because it is a very nerve-wracking period of time. So I'm looking forward to doing that and happy to learn of that tonight. Also excited to start, at least at the council, in the council space, conversations around grade configurations as well as later high school start times, which you know that Councilor Matt O'Malley and I are strong advocates for. Also to continue to support our students who are experiencing homelessness and support their families. I know Superintendent referenced 3,000. I go with the 4,000 number, and I believe that it is closer to 4,000 than it is to 3,000. And look forward to supporting Katie's Closet and hopefully bringing it to one of our high schools in the city, but with private money. I think it's really important that Katie's Closet has some really great resources and that we utilize them and support that, but with some private funding. I also am excited to support the work that's happening in transportation to reduce those costs and really get those dollars into our classrooms. And certainly, my, my list isn't limited, my time is limited, not my list, but two other points that I'd like to just mention is Madison Park and our work that we're doing over at our city's only vocational school. And then finally, I spoke earlier this year about preparing our schools and our students for the legalization of recreational marijuana and that we're doing the work in our schools to make sure that our kids are educated and informed and that we're also collecting baseline data as we, over the next less than 12 months, will be introducing it to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Carco, and he'll be followed by Sylvia Goldman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Chang, and members of the school committee for the opportunity to speak to you today, coincidentally on a subject that you'll be discussing later. My name is Tom Carco. I'm a resident of Dorchester. I am also proud of my work as a K-0 and K-1 special educator at the P.A. Shaw Elementary under the leadership of Principal Akosia Osibabi. My students are my neighbors, and I consider myself fortunate to be able to live and work in such a vibrant community. Boston Public Schools is responsible for tremendous good in our city, but I'm here today to speak on a seemingly small matter that prevents us from doing the most good for our children. Even after meeting with union leaders, the executive director for OHC, nothing could be done to overcome some systems that I believe you are in the process of addressing. Early childhood and special education classrooms thrive with the support of paraprofessionals. And I'm grateful that the proposed contract recognizes this and takes some steps toward appropriately filling these roles with dedicated and qualified individuals. I cannot stress enough, however, that the current paraprofessional placement process seems to prioritize seniority and longevity over the service of student needs. Mine is a substantially separate multi-age classroom of three, four, and five-year-old children with special needs and special rights. Due to a hopefully former system of hiring, my students will not return to two familiar and trusted adult faces next week, a teacher who, and a paraprofessional who deeply understand their needs. Instead, my students will come back next week and meet a pair with seniority who was assigned from across town despite my objections and the objections of my principal. The paraprofessional they knew and trusted has been shipped off to another BPS school. By failing to provide the consistency that these children deserve, I believe we are failing to do the most good for some of Boston's most fragile learners. As you review the proposed contract and the steps it takes to increase school-based hiring autonomy for paraprofessionals, I implore you to keep my little classroom in mind. My principal is highly involved in the academic success of students at our school. She, as my evaluator, knows the strengths and weaknesses I bring to the classroom and with our hiring committee. She is best equipped to make a hiring decision, not a seniority list. I'm confident that the Office of Human Capital can find a way to balance a commitment to our career teachers and the paraprofessionals while maintaining a focus on student needs. I love the work I do. I'm as excited as you are for my kids to come back. Again, my students are my neighbors, and I hope that we can continue in our efforts to do the most good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carco.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sylvia Goldman, and she'll be followed by Nika Hall and Shalina Semexen. Is Ms. Goldman here? Okay. Next, we'll hear from Nika Hall.
And after Ms. Hall will be?
After Ms. Hall will be Shalina Semexen and Harry Harding.
I'm asking my auntie to sit with me. I'm not afraid to speak, but I do get emotional when I'm speaking about my babies. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Chang and Deputy Superintendent Estrada, Estrada, sorry, for speaking with me before the meeting started. I'm Nika Hall, and I live in Hyde Park. I'm Nika Hall, and I live in Hyde Park. I'm the mother of two Boston Public School students, and I'm here to talk about my 17-year-old son who lives with kidney disease. After six 504 plans in a three-year period, being told that the exam schools beat to the tune of their own drum, and if he were here more, he would not be downgraded, and too many more comments to mention here at this time, my son, who had been a student at Boston Latin Academy since seventh grade, decided to make an attempt to salvage his future plans by leaving BLA and enrolling in Boston Collaborative High School, which, as you know, is another Boston public school. He began at BCHS in December, and by May 8th, he had completed all of the seven classes required to graduate. He was 16 at that time, 16.6, I'd say, 16.6, 16.7 when he finished his coursework, and received a graduation date of June 16th. My son's father did not agree with the change and did not want him to graduate from any school other than BLA, not because of the intense academics, but because of the name. A father who added his name to my son's file two years ago, not to get involved, but because he could. We went to court on June 5th, and the court sent my then-16-year, 10-month-old son on an extended visit with his father and stepmother in North Andover, where he still resides. On June 12th, a temporary restraining order was put in place barring the Boston Public Schools from allowing my son to graduate. When I reached out to BLA, I was told that they would take him back if he had not been graduated in the system. I asked about the state requirements, and I was told he may have completed the state guidelines but not ours. My son returned to BLA and took the 11th grade finals and passed all except for one. He went to summer school for the first time in his life, and as of tomorrow, he will be returning to BLA as an 11th grader, being retained for the first time in his life.
20 seconds.
I am a graduate from the Boston Public Schools. I went to Boston Latin School, and for similar reasons, I left Boston Latin School and went to another course to college where I received my diploma. I'm just wondering, is my diploma valid or anyone else who did not receive a diploma in the Boston Public Schools from an exam school? Because if my son, which he did, he was scheduled to graduate, I have all of the documentation, he's been told differently. He's been retained. He will graduate in 2019 if something isn't done. Legally, he's done with his high school education, but because his father wanted him to return, he's now going back tomorrow, and he doesn't know. When he arrives in school tomorrow from North Andover, he will be placed in an 11th grade classroom. Who's speaking for my son? Where's my son's voice? Who's listening to my son's voice? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Our next speaker is Shalina Semexin, and she'll be followed by Harry Harding and Sam Tyler.
Good evening. Which mic? Doesn't matter?
Whichever one you'd like.
I sound good in both, don't I? Good evening. My name is Shalina Semexin. I'm the parent of three wonderful children currently. My kids attend KIP. I'm here on behalf of KIP parents. I'm one of the KIP parent leadership, I'm on the KIP parent leadership team. I'm nervous, you guys, so forgive me. And I'm here because we've been having trouble with transportation, and the trouble we've been having, it's been really bad. The last two days, a couple of our kids got no buses, and the kids stayed in the school till 7:30 yesterday. And today, the school had to call parents to come pick up their kids. Today, I was fortunate to help some parents get their kids home today, but to know that there's no transportation for our kids is unacceptable. To know that for the last three weeks we've been struggling with getting our kids in the system, I was told that my six-year-old, who is in the system, has transportation that's taken her to Rosendale. I live in Dorchester. I have three kids. All three of them should be able to get on the same school bus. Last week, Friday, I was informed when I called Transportation that she cannot get on the bus that her older two are getting, older two siblings are getting on because her name is not on that bus. I still put her on the bus in the morning. Another issue that I run into, Transportation have overbooked the buses. There is 80 students assigned to a 72-seat bus, so there's three kids sitting in the seat at a time. That is a safety issue. My biggest concern, I'm glad that you guys are doing great things, it's good that MIT is coming on board to help us out with this, but I'm beginning to believe that because we are a charter schools, that they don't want to give us transportation. And when they do, there's school buses that's coming, school starts at 7:30. There's a bus that's coming in at 9 o'clock in the morning. So these kids are still at the bus stop, waiting for school buses. I'm not sure what you guys can do to help us parents out, but I know BPS provides transportation for our charter school, and we need help. So if there's something that you guys can do that can work with us to help us, because I know it's out of the hands of the staff at KIP, I will be more likely to work with anyone to figure out what we can do to get Transportation on board with helping us out. You know, it's sad that you have little ones sitting in the school at 7 o'clock in the evening. You know, to get a phone call at 6:30 and the school is letting you know, your child is still in the school, come pick up your child, is unacceptable. You know, especially when you have kindergartners. They're missing dinner, and what else are they missing? They can't get their homework done. By the time they get home, it's late. So if there's something that you guys can do to help us out, I'm willing to work with you guys as a parent. And if you guys need us to come back again next month, I can rally up some parents who are willing to come in here so they could speak also, so you guys can hear their testimonies also about this transportation issue. Thank you, guys, for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Semexin. I'm going to ask Mr. John Hanlon, you'll see him standing up here in a second. He's the chief of operations for BPS and Transportation reports to him. He is aware of this issue that had happened, so he's going to, I'm going to ask him to speak with you directly on this.
Thank you so much. You guys enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Harry Harding, and he'll be followed by Sam Tyler and John Mudd.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Chang, fellow members of the committee, particularly those of you who are ready to get rid of your children tomorrow. My name is Harry Harding. I'm a resident of Dorchester, a parent of a former student in BPS, but I come to you today representing local nonprofit Children's Services of Roxbury. We are located right down the road here on Dudley Street. Coming today to really invite you and engage you regarding a particular event and cause that Children's Services of Roxbury is currently campaigning. On September 23rd, which is a Saturday, we are inviting the community to set a Guinness World Record to assemble the largest human peace symbol in the world. And this cause is both a benefit to Children's Services of Roxbury as well as a message to send to the larger community and the world that peace is both something that is derived from the services that are provided from an organization like Children's Services of Roxbury, but also from the idea of us coming together as a community. Children's Services of Roxbury serves approximately 6,000 families across the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A large subsection of those 6,000 families are represented in the Boston Public School system. We also have a fairly tight partnership with many of the schools here at Children's, in Boston Public Schools, which a colleague of mine, DuBois Marshall, will also speak to in a moment. But again, I encourage you and inviting you and engaging you, both as committee members and as community members and as parents, to help us engage the collective of the Boston Public School system, as well as your personal networks, to join us on Saturday, the 23rd of September, to celebrate peace. And again, Children's Services of Roxbury both provides early education, childcare, homeless, a lot of the homeless population that was spoken about earlier in this committee meeting. We serve, as well as a large behavioral health center, which we, again, serve hundreds of families in this community, particularly specializing in trauma. So I'd like to, again, invite you to be a part of that, and I want to turn it over to my colleagues to talk a little bit more about our progress with partnerships.
Good evening, committee members. Thank you for giving us this time. My name is DuBois Marshall, and I'm the Training Staff Development Specialist for Children's Services of Roxbury. My job is to train over 350 staff to go out in the community and support families who have children with emotional and social issues or in diagnosis, many of which are in Boston Public Schools. We definitely have skin in the game when it comes to mental health in Boston Public Schools. We are currently in about 15 to 17 schools, one of which is Young Achievers, where we have clinicians on site, and we work closely with staff and so forth and so on. And so what we have asked some folks to do, we've gone around to the schools, talked to some of the principals, especially some of the high schools, connecting peace of mind to the community service hours. And principals have been very open to allowing the children to count whatever they do for this as part of their community service hours, be it 25 hours, 30 hours, whatever that looks like. We are currently in the Taylor, the Curly, Higginson Lewis, Higginson Elementary. So again, we have some skin in the game. Peace of mind, when you brought up another opportunity to continue the dialogue about what's going on, this event can provide those kinds of opportunities, and we really hope that folks will come out in support. What we're asking folks to do in each individual school, and we would like to ask the committee members, is have a team. We have a tracking form here, right? And so we have team members in schools who are getting their families or friends or those other students in the classroom who would like to come and participate. Again, this is going to be September 23rd on the Boston Common. We have the mayor's honorary co-chair will come and speak, and we have some committee members.
President Rosenberg, Senate President Rosenberg is actually honorary co-chair as well. You mentioned the mayor as well are provided. We'd like to also thank Counselor Asabi George, who spoke earlier today. She actually has also publicly endorsed us as well in terms of this cause. So thank you, Counselor Asabi George, for that as well.
So just really opening up the dialogue on what is peace of mind? What does that look like internally? Because that's where it starts. Then also in our schools and our communities, and this is an opportunity, we need about 6,000 folks to break the world record. So we've got a big task ahead of us, and we really appreciate you guys, your folks' help in getting the word out, be it through newsletters or whatever it is throughout all Boston Public Schools, and also asking you guys if you would be a team leader, your own social networks within the schools. That would be great. I do have information here, tracking forms, and more information on it. And again, I am the point person, and Harry's the point person. We'll give you our contact information, any other information that you may need. And just one thing, we know it's a Saturday, so what we've worked out with the MBTA is free transportation for all of your children who want to attend the event. What they're going to be able to do is download a particular credential anywhere they are in the city. You present this at the MBTA, and you'll have free transportation to and from the event for the children and their families. So we've tried to think about that, the logistical part of it, and again, we can explain more on how that would work for all those who'd like to participate.
So thank you, Mr. Harding, Mr. Marshall. Let's go over the details. September 23rd on Boston Common, what time?
10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. is when it opens. We'll be gathering people for the actual forming of peace symbol at 11:30. The official count will take place at noon.
I assume we'll be on the big open field?
At the parade grounds, actually. It's the corner of Beacon and Charles.
Across from the public gardens?
That's correct.
And I'm going to ask that you also see Mr. Richard Weir in the back corner from the BPS communications team, just so that he could be helpful and get it out through the BPS communications, social channels, which all of us will then pick up on as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And you need how many to break the record?
We need 6,000. 5,000 and plus will break the record, but we're shooting for 6,000.
For 6,000 to make sure.
So just bring 5,099 out of your closest friends, Mr. Chairman, and we'll be just fine.
But anything you can do to help us?
Thank you. Make sure to see Mr. Richard Weir in the back corner, and he'll communicate, he'll coordinate about getting it out through the BPS channels.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Sam Tyler, and he'll be followed by John Mudd.
Mr. Chairman, members, Superintendent Chang, I'm, as you might have guessed, going to be talking about the teacher's contract that you'll be discussing later on today or this night, this meeting. You know, it's been our custom over the years at the Research Bureau to be an advocate for medium reform in the Boston teacher's contract. And over the past two years, we've written a research report arguing for bold reform, basically centering on improving or teacher quality, teacher effectiveness in the next contract, and we have issued a series or a few, what we call Bureau updates, which are single-page articles, sort of updating where the status of negotiations is in this contract and reiterating the need for bold reform. So in that context, it should be no surprise that with a little information that is available at this point in time about this contract, that we're disappointed in what we see in terms of lack of really bold reform to improve student achievement. You know, the contract has been described as fair and reasonable for teachers and students, and I think certainly it is for teachers, not as much for students. There are a few incremental improvements that sound exciting, codifying mutual consent to facilitate the hiring of effective teachers. Sounds good. And yes, mutual consent is built into the contract, so the words are there, but in practice, it represents no change other than the fact that the school won't have to pay the stipend of $1,250 for each open position. That'll save the BPS $500,000. However, the contract does not address the issue of the $8 million in this school budget to pay for SPC teachers who have not been selected by schools. That should have been part of this contract. Applying the concept of mutual consent to paraprofessionals who support students with autism and other emotional impairments is a good step, but it's limited. It applies to 20% of all the pairs. Mutual consent, given the responsibility of pairs in schools, particularly in elementary schools, mutual consent should be equally applying to the paraprofessionals as it does to the teachers. That should be in the next contract. Next Wednesday, you know, the teachers certainly will ratify this contract with a 2%, 3% for two years, as well as other provisions in the contract. And the school committee, you'll approve this next Wednesday as well. However, the lack of meaningful reform in this Boston teacher's contract provides, it does provide a reset, as has been described in the media, but it also ups the ante for bold reform to improve student achievement in the next contract.
20 seconds.
So the city must be firm in its reform objectives in this next contract and be resolved not to accept anything less than what you start out with. This two-year contract was for the teachers. The next contract needs to be for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler.
Thank you. Our final speaker is John Mudd.
Good evening. Advocate Emeritus John Mudd. New strategy this year, instead of being among the last to talk, I'm going to try and be among the first, secular-wise, if not spiritually. So welcome to the new year, you know, in our joint struggle to try and bring social and educational justice to the next generation of our young people. Last July, we celebrated the Opportunity and Achievement Gap presentation, which was a milestone in the process of translating the policy into practice in the schools. Now you and we have the opportunity and challenge to make this real for students in their schools and classrooms. I've got a few specific suggestions for your action in this respect. One, I would encourage you to insist on reviewing detailed plans and SMART goals from each of the key operating departments. At the July meeting, the chair asked if the departments were taking these implementation plans seriously. I think for you to regularly review and give visibility to that review of plans that have been, in effect, approved by the superintendent and the Achievement Gap Task Force as adequate will provide the kind of visibility the issue needs. Secondly, staff the Opportunity and Achievement Gap office so it can do its job of providing leadership and especially effectively monitor each of the operating departments in their implementation of the SMART goals. My sense now is that the office has too much program staff, 10 Boys projects or other things like that, and not enough high-level monitoring staff to oversee the departments. Colin Rose can't do that alone. Third, and perhaps most challenging for you, I've suggested in the past and would reiterate, that the school committee should consider holding a series of oversight hearings, now each of which would focus on a specific area of implementation on a regular basis, perhaps bi-monthly. And I'm saying oversight hearings, which would be different than these school committee meetings, different than the budget hearings, in which you would focus on a particular topic, have not only testimony from Boston Public School staff, but also from outside experts and stakeholders, and enable you to have a discussion with those outside experts and stakeholders and not just have them... and stakeholders, and not just have them pour out their thoughts, as I do very frequently on these evening meetings, without a chance to talk with you. I would focus these issues on critical priorities requiring interdepartmental action, and schedule those throughout the school year. I'd suggest initial hearings on early hiring and staff diversity, on professional development, on literacy. There are other key points of leverage that the school committee can highlight to ensure that the Opportunity and Achievement Gap issues receive the intentions that they should. These targets include issues like the program budget, the school quality plans, or whatever they're now called, the instructional focus that is required of each school, and a fully developed ONG impact statement that goes beyond the equity we now see. The, the program budget that was distributed last meeting was a beginning step, but it doesn't deal effectively with Opportunity and Achievement Gap issues. They are not embedded in that document, and I would hope you would insist that for fiscal year, the next budget, for fiscal year 18, that, that, that those issues be embedded in the program budgets for each of the operating departments. So, I guess I'm being buzzed. I look forward to, you're going to be hearing from Special Education later. You can look at that in terms of its analysis of Opportunity and Achievement Gap issues, and the explanation of how those gaps will be overcome or reduced, and I look forward to talking with you perhaps early in the next meeting on the program budget. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Mr. O'Neill, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $106,924,009. Before we open it up to questions to committee, I'd like to invite our Director of Federal and State Grants, Anu Janath, and Chief Financial Officer Eleanor Lawrence to please join us. I'm doing that because we have several large chunks in this, namely the, we now have the actual allocations of the federal Title I and the IDEA grants. So, I also want to inform committee members before our speakers talk in particular about those grants, it actually totals 19 grants. I am going to ask that it be in a series of two votes instead of one, because one committee member will have to abstain for one, so we'll actually try to cover 18 grants totaling $106,915,009 in one vote, and then one separate grant for $9,000, and I'll explain that at the time. So, I'm not sure who's going to speak first.
Good evening. So, as Chairperson O'Neill just mentioned, we have 19 grants tonight totaling $107 million for approval. These grants include our federal entitlement grants, so Title I, II, III, Perkins, and IDEA, as well as a new Title IV allocation. With these allocations, we're roughly in line overall versus our FY '18 projections, with some areas coming in higher and some lower than projected. With Title I, we received approximately 5% or 1.7 million more than our projection. However, the new ESR requirement states that a proportionate share of funds for private school services should be calculated based on the total amount of the district grant allocation before we take any reservations, which is different from prior years. As a result, we're required to set aside a larger amount for the non-public schools with eligible Boston students, which is approximately 1 million more than the allocation in previous years. With Title II, we received approximately 31% lower than our projection, which is about 1.7 million less. IDEA came in at just 1% lower than our projection. School allocations remain unchanged, so schools will still receive a total of 15.8 million in Title I funding, which is what we allocated during the budget cycle. The new Title IV grant is a student support and academic enrichment allocation that is part of the formula grants under ESR. We have been awarded 976,000 under this new funding stream. These funds also have a set-aside requirement for the non-public schools, but the balance of the funding follows the same priorities as Title I. And so, we can be, it can be used on priorities that are already identified with our original Title I needs assessment. We plan on using this new funding stream to balance our priority, priorities within all the three Title I, sorry, all the three Title funding streams.
Thank you. Do you have the aggregate then between 1, 2, 3, 4, et cetera, of projection versus total?
Yes. So, when we balance across all four, all the, the three funding streams, Title I, not Title III, sorry, Title I, Title II, and the new Title IV allocation, we're just a little bit lower than our projection, so it came out to approximately about $150,000 lower than what we had projected.
Okay. And Ms. Lawrence, could you just address how you had done the projections? Because we actually talked about this during the budget cycle. You had planned for overall reductions.
Yeah. Frankly, given the level of uncertainty, both at the federal and state level, we're quite pleased to be this close to our projections, and there is as much art as there is science in doing the projections. You have been a great partner, Chairman O'Neill, in being in touch with, with what's happening at the federal level, so we look at historic patterns. We appreciate our partnership with colleagues at DESI, who we met with on a number of occasions over the course of the year, for them to foreshadow what they were expecting, particularly with Title I. And we use that to inform our projections. As Anu said, we were a little high in places, a little low in others, and we're quite pleased that they've evened out. It's a good news situation for us, given the environment. Did that address your question?
Yes. Questions from committee members on this particular issue? Any impact to schools or to budget based upon the changes that you saw of actual versus projected?
Not material changes, no.
Okay. Thank you. Any of the members have questions on that? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if there are no further questions on the grants, then entertain a motion to approve the grants. I do want to make sure, Ms. Sullivan, that we do this very carefully. So, the first is for 18 grants totaling $106,915,009. We're excluding everything but the sixth grant on the list, so it would be everything except grant number six. So, may I have a motion to approve those 16 grants as presented?
I can.
Thank you. Dr. Yuriyate, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Any further discussion? If not, any discussion or objection? An objection to approving those particular 16 grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, those grants were approved. We will now entertain, now entertain a motion to approve the sixth grant on the list, which is totaling $9,000, and that is entitled, I want to make sure I get the list right, high school graduation rates and post-secondary readiness among first language is not, among students whose first language is not English? And that's a $9,000 grant? Is it, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. LaCanto, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, thank you. Any discussion or objection? Dr. Yuriyate, Ms. Oliver Davila?
No, I'm abstaining.
So, you just want to make a record that you're abstaining on that particular vote? So, with that, any other, any other discussion or objection? Any objection to approving that grant by unanimous consent with one abstention? Thank you. That grant is approved. We'll now, we'll now move on to our next in action, our next in act, action item, excuse me, which is the renewal of innovation school status for all, with all current autonomies for the Margarita Munoz Academy for the school year 2017-18. You'll recall at our last meeting, Margarita Munoz Academy Headmaster, Dania Vasquez, presented this proposal to the academy, to the committee. Superintendent, do you have any final comments on this?
No. Just want to note that Dania Vasquez, the headmaster, is here today, and, yes.
Standing up, all the way in the back.
And is any of your team members here? Or just you? Okay, so she'll, she's here. So, just want to make note that she is here today.
Great. Thank you, Headmaster Vasquez, for attending, considering we know you have school first thing in the morning. I said, "Thank you, Headmaster Vasquez, for attending, knowing you have school first thing in the morning." Are there any questions or comments from committee on this request? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion authorizing the renewal of innovation school status with all current autonomies for the Margarita Munoz Academy for school year 2017-18 as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. It sounds like a second from Ms. Oliver Davila. Any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson? Ms. Regina Robinson?
She excused herself for a moment.
Excuse me. Dr. Yuriyate?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
I'm sorry, Dr. Yuriyate, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No, it sounded to me like you had said here. I didn't, I just went.
No, no, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you, Headmaster Vasquez, to you and your team, and we look forward to a great year at the school as well. I'm sure a number of us will be out to see you during the year. We'll move on to our first report and update from the Office of Special Education. At this time, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Cindy Nielsen to please join, step forward her presentation. But first, Superintendent Chang, do you have some opening remarks? And this is the first of two presentations tonight around special ed, just so folks know. The first is from the Office of Special Ed, and then we will hear from SPEDPAC as well. So, Superintendent, do you have some opening comments?
Yep. Today, you're here from Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, Cindy Nielsen. She's going to be providing some updates from the Office of Special Education. Specifically, she will be talking about progress made to build more inclusive settings across the district, and also some specific actions we've taken to ensure our students with special needs are being more prepared for college career and life. We'll turn it over to you. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman O'Neill, school committee members, Superintendent Chang. I want to thank you for this opportunity to present this evening on the work the Office of Special Education is doing to prepare our students with disabilities to be college, career, and life-ready. Our special education vision guides the work that we do each day. Aligned with the essentials for instructional equity, we understand and respond to the strength and areas of growth for our students with disabilities. Born out of the recommendations made in the 2015 report to the school committee and previous and present work done around inclusive practices in the district, we have developed five priorities that build toward inclusive practices. They are identification and placement, quality of instructional sports and services, students' family and community engagement, equity and accountability or compliance, and transition services. Each decision that we make as a department and collaboratively with ASSET takes these five areas of work into account. Our students with disabilities make up about 20% of the entire BPS student population. Our English learners with disabilities make up approximately 1/3 of that 20% of students. As you can see from the slide, there has been movement in increasing the number of students in inclusive settings and decreasing the number of students in substantially separate settings. The movement is consistent across both students with disabilities and English learners with disabilities. While we are proud of the small gains made since school year 14-15, we are aware that there is much work still to do in moving students into receiving more of their services in general education settings. This slide illustrates our students broken down by disability and race. Our students with low incidence and spectrum disabilities are more aligned to our state rates when comparing by race. In our high incidence disabilities, we have a higher incidence of black students diagnosed with emotional impairment and intellectual impairment when compared to their white and Asian peers. There is a higher incidence of being diagnosed with a communication or specific learning disability amongst our Hispanic students when compared with white and Asian peers. Specific to these data points, we recognize the need to dive deeper into this data to address the root causes of the difference in primary disability designation based on race. In addition, we have synthesized our work with that of ASSET, specifically the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Office and the policy, to create specific target goals to address root causes and existing disparities. In the slides ahead, there are more specific action steps that address these data. In analyzing our graduation and dropout rates, we need to remember that these data show all students based on the four-year cohort. In special education, we have students that are with us until age 22. In 2016 graduation data, we are seeing that the graduation rate is on the rise overall for our students with disabilities, and since 2012. Specifically, we have seen a steady increase with our students with communication disabilities, emotional impairment, and specific learning disabilities, and our English learners with disabilities. In our interest to keep this momentum going, we recognize that there are specific disability categories that we need to address in a more concerted way. Our students with autism and intellectual impairments have made scattered gains over the years. We are also seeing a decrease in dropout rates. While looking at the rates dependent on setting, we see clear data that show that students in inclusive settings are less likely to drop out than our students in substantially separate settings. It is important to continue our work with inclusive settings to decrease the dropout rate further, as our expectation is that this rate is much closer to zero. To that end, we are going to take a look at the work that has been happening to continue the successes and to continue to address our challenges. We focused the budget this year on services that target the work that we have outlined. This year, we redistributed the inclusive support dollars from going to a certain number of schools to distributing the dollars to every school that had full inclusion students enrolled. This led to more equity across how we distribute our dollars to support inclusive practices. We also increased our ABA specialists by seven and added one BCBA for the high school level. Transition has maintained the investment from school year 16-17 of 1.7 million dollars to continue the work this year. In order to improve our accuracy with identification and placement for students, we are targeting referrals to special education. The Office of Special Education, in collaboration with ASSET, systemically offered foundations to all K-2, first and second grade classrooms across the district. Foundations is a rule-based, rules-based reading program that teachers have as a tool to teach fundamental reading skills like decoding and encoding. The multisensory approach to teaching utilizes different modalities to learning and results in teaching that can reach many different types of learners. Students who may be attending school for the first time to students who could read by four are all able to access Foundations. There has been a concentration in increasing the quality of instructional supports and services in autism and ABA for the past few years. This year, we are continuing our work in the area of ABA and also targeting the quality of instructional supports and services in specific learning disabilities or SLD. SLD is the most common primary disability that we have in BPS, similar to that of the nation. To that end, intensive rules-based reading programs address, addresses the challenge that are our common characteristics. More often, our students with SLD fall into the category of reading. Training our teachers to provide Wilson or Oring-Gillingham provides teachers with the multisensory tools and strategies necessary to address the challenges with reading and decoding intensively. Another way that we are increasing the quality of instructional supports and services is through direct support to schools through inclusive support teams. We are excited to have 12 educators deeply committed to inclusive practices and sharing their knowledge and skills in instructional strategies and classroom management to ensure that students are successfully accessing the least restrictive environment. The inclusive support teams spent the past two days continuing their own professional learning, as well as developing a strong team of support for our schools. In addition, the inclusion working group meetings have been scheduled for the school year, and we will be meeting in smaller groups around these topics. The BPS vision for inclusive practices, supports for established inclusion programs, supports for schools looking to establish or expand, examination of weighted student formula and needs of students in inclusive settings, and finally geographic opportunities and assignment impacts. Starting at the Teacher Summer Institute this summer, and in collaboration with ASSET, Special Education launched three-hour professional learning courses in the topics listed. TSI was a great place to start this work, as we had participants from different roles, including general education, special education, coordinators of special education, related service providers, and others. We are offering the same PED professional learnings to be held at school sites over the course of the year. In addition, Special Education will be developing professional development that focuses on general education curriculum in both resource and substantially separate settings, and strategies for middle and high school students. Our goal is to reach at least 500 participants between now and June 2018. Student family and community engagement is the cornerstone of the work for our students with disabilities. The most important members of the IEP team are the students' family. It is our responsibility as a district to provide information to families so that they can make the most informed decision for their children. With 1/3 of our students with, students with disabilities population also English learners, we must provide trainings for parents in their native language. We have partnered with SPEDPAC, neighborhood community-based organizations, and the Federation for Children's Special Needs to present on three key topics. Understanding the special education process, understanding a child's IEP, and transitions or transition planning. In the fall, we will be presenting in Chinese, Haitian Creole, and Spanish in the neighborhoods that those languages are most prevalent. From in January through March, we will be presenting in Cape Verdean, Spanish, and Vietnamese, and we're confirming a presentation in Somali. In the compliance world of education, we are excited to roll out ED Plan. We are very grateful for the partnership and dedication that OIT and ODA provided to us and with us in this journey. We had an expected launch date of 9/5, which is listed, but hit a few bumps along the way. We are happy to report that ED Plan officially launched today about 90, about two hours ago, officially launched. ED Plan will house our IEP system, and for the first time in BPS, 504 plans will be ED Plan will house our IEP system, and for the first time in BPS, 504 plans will be housed in the same database. The accessibility features of ED Plan are endless. From dashboards of information available to all users, to more flexibility in documenting services, to overall better throughout-the-year compliance monitoring, ED Plan is able to carry out our individualization and data needs to the next level. With the new IEP system, the Special Education Process and Procedures Handbook has been redesigned, updated, and made electronic. This handbook is launching bringing us up to speed and mokuhairn simultaneously with the training on the new IEP system. I want to specifically thank Andrea F. Thomas for her tireless work and unrelenting drive to get this transition as perfect as possible. And lastly, we are continuing the work from last year and building transition services so our students are college, career, and life-ready. We will be continuing the same partnerships as last year, starting some new partnerships and expanding longstanding partnerships. Our new partnership with Marriott Bridges from School to Work opens up opportunities for our students with mild to moderate disabilities to train for and experience their strengths in the workforce. In partnership with the Ruderman Foundation, we are able to extend this opportunity to 60 students this year, with an expectation to expand to 75 students next year. Our new partnership with ItoI provides the infrastructure to create mentoring opportunities for students with specific learning disabilities. We are excited to learn and grow from ItoI by way of students learning from and building relationships with people who are similar to them. I am happy to thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen. I'll open it now to questions and comments from committee members. Is Oliver Davila?
Yes. I just had a question on, thank you for your presentation. And it's great that that rolled out two hours ago.
Yes.
My question is, in terms of the ED Plan piece, so it's very staff-focused, is there also a place for families to be able to access the information? Will that be part of the trainings, too?
Yes, that's one of the most exciting pieces of the plan. The new IEP system is the accessibility for parents to be able to access their students' information online as well.
Okay, great.
And there also will be training as we roll that out, definitely.
Great, thank you.
A lot of this training, excitingly, is coming via webinars, too, so much more accessible for people.
You were the most calm person I've ever seen in the middle of a rollout of new technology.
I have to say, and I will be thanking them later.
You know what's in front of you? Have you checked to see if it's working?
Yes, and it's been that the team I have is phenomenal, and I can't say enough about the work that everyone's done to make sure this happens, so that's why I'm so calm, so we should be thanking them.
Okay.
It's been very impressed.
Okay. Dr. Yuriarte?
Cindy, thanks a lot for this presentation. I think that, you know, as I communicated with you earlier today, I think that it shows some really important improvements that should be highlighted, and I want to go over them, even though you haven't, just so that you can see that we can see how things are improving. The first, I think that the new IEP is a major gain. I think I was, I think all of us that were watching this sort of unfold last year and the promise, and you know, we were saying, I am congratulating you. I think this is really a big, big, big deal. I also have to say that I am almost in tears about how you have handled the inclusion of English language learners in this report. As you know, it's been an ongoing dialogue, sometimes louder than others, on this issue. And I am just beyond, you know, happy that we can see it throughout, that, you know, the Sped community in BPS is really owning how high a percentage of that, those group of children are children that are English language learners. I have some comments to make, but I think it shows very clearly, and I wanted to congratulate you and your staff, because it shows movement, it shows growth, it shows hope. And so I'm, you know,
Thank you.
Your number-one applause giver on this. I think the outreach to multilingual communities is something that we have been struggling with and, you know, trying to find ways in which families can gain information in whatever, you know, around issues that are really critical to them. I mean, I see Carolyn in the audience, I'll ask her about SpedPAC in a little bit, but I think that parent-to-parent and, you know, school-to-parent information is really critical. And the fact that you're planning it in several languages is also really, really good. So, but I do have some questions that I wanted to go over. The first is that I was going to ask you to provide some information for us. One is that, and I'm going to focus here both on ELLs with disabilities and some of the general issues, but first on ELLs with disabilities. If you can, if you could give us some, the outcome data comparing the ELLs with disability to English-speaking students with disabilities, so that we can see what how, how much of an impact language makes, and so that we can understand that better. In slide number six, I have a big question.
Yes.
And that is around how you're handling English language learners in that. Are you meaning to say no? Okay, so what my question to her, because she listed English language, you know, ELLs as a category of disability.
Yes.
So my question to her is, are you sure that you want that there? Okay, so why don't you tell us a little bit about that?
I appreciate that you pointed that out, and looking at it again, that was not the intent. It was to get as much information on one slide as possible, and we will not do that in the future.
Sometimes an extra slide is a good thing.
Yes, and I learned that today, so definitely the next time that will be broken out into an extra slide. It was not the intent at all. It was to show the comparison as we've been breaking everything out.
If anybody saw that table, I mean, they would react exactly the same way.
And that's much appreciated. Thank you very much, yeah.
So I want to make sure that, since it's a public document,
Yes.
that we, you know, come out with public information in a way that is correct, and it doesn't, you know, doesn't give a, you know, an impression that we don't know what we're, you know, that there's a problem.
Yes.
In terms of, I was wondering whether you could talk a little bit more about sort of the meaning of the large enrollment of ELLs in Sped. What, you know, what are the consequences of that, and how are you and your team really looking at and sort of transforming and dealing with that? And if you could just briefly talk a little bit about what strategies you're being developed to, you know, to adjust services to this large population? How are you, what kind of progress are being made in terms of the, you know, of the hiring of teachers that can speak to these children in their own language? And also what kind of professional development is being, you know, developed that will allow for the broad community of Sped teachers to, you know, to be more facile with students that are ELLs with disabilities?
Okay.
I have two general questions. The first is about the achievement gap and how, you know, it is a challenging one. So I was wondering, and as I was looking at your data, one of the things that came up for me is that usually when we see data in the aggregate, it seems like an impossible thing to really tackle, because we don't know enough about the subtleties of the population to really be able to direct direct specific interventions. So I was wondering whether you had, you all had considered, your team had considered, what are some of the ways in which, aside from the different types of disability, are there any other ways to sort of look at this population so that we can begin to direct more specific, more specific, you know, services or ways to meet their needs? As we know, this is the largest gap. You know, the opportunity achievement, the achievement gap between students that have special needs is the largest one. So that, you know, in thinking about that, what are you, you know, what are you finding? And what are you thinking about? And the other one, the final one, is that recently, there have been a couple of articles talking about you know, that have come out that talk about the under-enrollment of minority students in Sped. Usually, we assume the latter, we assume the opposite, that there is an over-enrollment. But there's now documentation that there is also an under-enrollment problem. So I was wondering whether you could talk a little bit about how does that behave in BPS? Have you done any research on that? Is there anything that you would like to see done so that you can get a handle on that? So, you know, again, in general, you know, more slides are a good thing when there's required. And then talk a little bit about the meaning of your, you know, of having such a large group of ELLs among special needs students, and then the two more general questions.
Sure.
And thank you very much.
Absolutely. Again, thank you for the slide point out. That's good learning. So regarding the students, the large population of students that are ELL, but also students with disabilities, what that's, what we looked at as a department and as a district, and what to really make sure we're focusing our time on is making sure we're identifying language and how to teach language specifically. To the point of Foundations, that was exactly where we were going with what it looks like to have such a large population of students that might not have had access to phonics, basically, and the decoding and encoding. So knowing that we have such a large population of students being identified that are also English learners in special, with disabilities, making sure that we have good first learning and tier-one teaching that's happening that addresses language specifically at the most basic level, so we can ensure that as we're teaching and progressing with language to, sorry, with reading to literacy, that students have the foundation to be able to get there. So that was one of the major workings of when we're working with, as ASSET, and talking about this Foundations implementation, making sure that we were looking at that specific piece around language. Once the student's identified and getting special education services and also an English learner, our IEPs, and again, the system's really helping with this as well, but making sure we can disaggregate how we're writing our language goals for students, and making sure we're identifying specific strategies that are getting put into the IEP for students so that they're able to, so anyone reading the IEP can see, a need has been identified that's not disability-related. It may be language-related instead of disability-related, and how we're going to be addressing that either individually or together with a disability. And so
That's now in the new IEP.
Yes, yep. And we have the same features that we had from before, and we've been able to enhance some of those features. We have a lot of actually really exciting things that we would like to show the task force that we've been able to integrate into the new system, so it's now just part of what's happening. It's not going to be added later, it's happening now. So yes, definitely, the language learning goals, and also, not to get too technical, but in our accommodations section, that's another place that, yeah, that we're making sure, yes, the accommodations that are there. We're also making sure that all the minutes that students are receiving for English ELL services are going to be documented in the additional information section. So it will be part of the, anything else that we need to know for a student, those minutes will be there for a student with an ELL SWD.
I think you're making John Mudd really, really happy.
He looks happy. Yes, so, so those are some of the things that we need to address. Knowing that we have such a large population of our students that are with disabilities that are also English learners.
How about the training of, you know, the professional development of teachers and staff in general?
Yes. So a lot of the professional learning we're doing now is across, so it's individualized to the department, but across ASSET, so we're making sure that we're talking to other colleagues across the department. So obviously, ELL is one of them, and we also have Yvonne Barrero with us, too, to make sure that we are addressing both needs when we're looking at anything that we're doing. She meets with us regularly so that our professional development is being developed at the lens of all learners, specifically students that might have intersecting needs, like ELL SWDs. Regarding the hiring of teachers, we've been working with a couple of universities on pipelines. That was one of the major things we identified, was that we didn't really have a pipeline of teachers to interview and hire. So we're working with area universities to make sure that we're creating pipelines for existing BPS employees that are culturally linguistically diverse, that are interested in teaching and helping them get that next step towards being able to become a teacher. And that's actually in partnership with Boston University. So we're working on those types of pipelines, and again, we have so many universities. In addition, we're always trying to find anyone that we can that is bilingual and also special education certified. It's a very unique skill set that we are always trying to cultivate. Sorry, what's going on?
Yeah, the general questions about the sub-populations of, you know,
Yes. When you asked to break that data out, I think that's really interesting about finding another way to break the data out, not just based on disability, but then how to drill down to see what that looks like. I think that what's really interesting is when we look at the data around breaking our, the data down by race, and we see where the disparities are there and the over-representation that's happening based on the amount of students that we have within the district, and then how many are being identified, that is just, there's a disparate piece that's happening there. So that's another interesting way to break it down, as well as I was, I'd love to brainstorm more ways to break down the data as you're asking to, because once we're doing that drilling down, it's when we're identifying where we need to find more strategies. To your point on specific strategies for disabilities for all students, we've been working to differentiate the curriculum across different types of disabilities. So, for example, ACE was something we introduced for autism a few years ago now. And as with the success, we've also been able to expand that to intellectual impairment, piloting in there, and then also piloting the ACE curriculum with emotional impairment. So really, being able to identify what are the good tools to use specifically for students with certain needs. So we're definitely drilling down the data to see what's working, and also just making sure that we're providing the professional learning for our teachers and staff so that they are able to have a very full toolkit, because a lot of kids are coming with a lot of different needs, so the more you have to work with, the more you're able to address the challenges. And finally, the under-enrollment of minority students is really interesting, actually, so. Asking about research, that's actually, I'm in a doctoral program, that's part of my research topic, is really looking at where we're identifying students and for what disabilities. And so the under-enrollment piece you're talking about, I'm very interested in the intersection of race, socioeconomic status, and ability designation. So as I pointed out earlier, we have a higher incidence of our black students being found with emotional impairment. All the disabilities that we in Boston are finding our students have a higher incidence of are all socially constructed disabilities. So they're disabilities that team members are making decisions on. They're not necessarily medically based or able to be diagnosed with a checklist. So I think that's a fascinating topic about the under or over-enrollment and looking what those pieces are. So yes, that's something I'm very interested in, and we'll keep bringing information on.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, it's, you know, again, impressive, the change from last year and the year before, and I really thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yuriarte. Mr. Locato?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Nielsen, for this helpful report. First of all, I just want to note, thank you so much for slide five and slicing and dicing the data that you delivered to us on the special education population, broken out, of course, by language abilities, as well as the physical and mental disabilities, and race, socioeconomic status. That's very helpful for us to understand. And, you know, as you know, that's been a work in progress for the committee in trying to get that type of slice on data delivered on a consistent basis, so it's very helpful for us. I also just want to take a moment to acknowledge the investment in manpower that's highlighted in your report tonight in new FTEs for inclusion, new ABAs, new commitments just through the recent contract settlement with the teachers' union, all helping to further the goals of the program that you've laid out for us tonight. So I just had two follow-up questions on inclusion, and specifically having to do with thinking back to prior year commitments and the work of the task force. I don't know if you have down and dirty sort of data that speaks to year-over-year changes to the number of classrooms that have been committed for inclusive settings, but if you have anything with you that you can speak to now, it would be great to know, you know, how we've progressed over the last couple of years in opening new classrooms, and what your projections might be going forward as well.
I actually don't have the number of classrooms that's specific. I can definitely get it for you by the end of the week. Absolutely for you to be able to look at. And then also with that, we're also in the process of projecting, too. So we can get some rough estimates as to what we'll be projecting for the next school year and then beyond.
That would be very helpful, and I think, you know, when it comes time for the budget as well, you know, it'd be helpful to bring that back as, once again, so that we can have a touch base on, you know, the work that we've done and what's remaining. The other question is just a simple one on, you know, we haven't reconstituted the task force, but you have a working group that's working on the recommendations of the former Inclusion Task Force, and I believe Dean Robinson has been attending those meetings. Can you give us a quick summary of what the focus is for the working group right now?
Sure. So the working group is working towards providing a report to Dr. Chang for his review and his review. The topics that, so when we came back together as a working group to make sure that we are addressing what was presented as the inclusion, with the Inclusion Task Force presented, and then where we are now, and then where we need to go, we came up with the, I lost them. We have the four areas, so we're going to have about three full group meetings this year where everyone's coming together, and then self-selected people broke out into different areas of interest that they had. And so a lot of setting off of what we are in progress but not completed for, from the 2015 report. So those areas are making sure that we are able to produce a BPS vision for inclusive practices, supports for established inclusion programs, so what their needs are obviously different than how we need to find supports for schools looking to establish or expand, and to see where they are. and to see where they are. Examination of WSF and needs for students in inclusive settings, so we're looking at that budget piece that was a major part of, I think, recommendation six from 2015. And then the geographic opportunities and assignment impacts is a big part of number two, which is more about making sure we're, two or three, that we're creating high-quality programs across the city and neighborhoods so that we don't have students traveling across the city. So that's what the inclusion working group will be focusing on.
Very good. We'll look forward to hearing more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto, Dean Robinson.
Thank you so much. Many of my colleagues asked a lot of great questions that I was already gearing up to ask as well, so thank you all for reading my mind early. I do want to first just applaud your work, applaud your team's work. The efforts made over the last seven years have really been remarkable. Leadership with partners like Carolyn Kane, but in, in, in leadership across the district, partners like Tom Hare, I'm just kind of reflecting on the journey that I've seen in the last seven years. You've really taken on a stronger position and Dr. Chang even in these last three years of leaning in to information, insight given from the committee, questions asked. The data shows here, these slides are very much indicative of questions we've asked over the last couple of years. And so I just want to applaud your efforts of listening and of leaning into just some of the questions, the opportunity achievement questions that we've been asking, the disparities that we've seen. So thank you, thank you and your team for this work. This is really, really critical work. You know it's dear, dear to my heart. So just additional, I guess, follow-up question. Content experts in some of these really critical areas that were, that have been discussed tonight, just in regards to expanding the language options of inclusion and engaging parents in the city. Do you have, or have you all been able to build any partnerships, for examples, with any community health centers that are meeting the needs of these communities that can partner with the district to either come and speak, to come and provide referrals, to have some, you know, in-house meetings? Because I'm thinking of some of the community health centers across the city who are also trying to meet families' needs and can help speak to both medical and educational resources. Have there, have you all been able to kind of scratch the surface in that area?
So we've definitely been reaching out. We haven't been with the community health centers yet. It's a great reminder to get, that's a good place to go definitely, so I'm definitely writing that down. But we've also, what we've been able to do too, which isn't necessarily community-based organizations, but really made sure we partnered with more state agencies to provide more services and information to our families, especially around things like age of majority, social security. There's some very complex things that happen as students get older. So we're definitely partnering much more with MRC and DDS, which is exciting, to make sure we're bringing more information to families. Because it's a tricky time.
That's really good. And if you, yeah, and if you do have opportunities, I know that South End Community Health Center, for example, is one that's, I guess the district, you know, has been having some conversation and what it looks like to collaborate both pediatrician and education together with their organization. So, and they have a huge Latino population and so they are constantly grappling with how do we serve our, our population with bilingual pediatricians and, and things of that nature. So when I saw the slide of all the languages, I immediately thought about, you know, potential partnerships that we can have. The hospitals and the universities are really, you know, critical partners. Information around, for example, sibling support, self-care for parents, how parents can learn the system, navigating the systems. I know many parents learned that firsthand from their pediatricians and from the hospitals before they even entered the school system. So the content experts, this is such a resource-rich city. So, you know, it would be great to kind of expand, you know, some of those partnerships. And then the other question was just around the, the professional development. Do you have numbers on how that, how many school leaders and teachers participated this year?
In the Teacher Summer Institute? I know that there are about over 850 people that are enrolled. I know, yeah. Yeah, we can definitely get it to you.
Okay, okay. Because that's, that's also helpful to know, just the, the investment that the teachers are making into this specific content because it's really critical. And then I also want to echo Dr. Yuradte's question around just the outcome data. That would be really great to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. I agree, a lot of colleagues have already asked questions. So I just simply want to make two points. First of all, I see a lot of people sitting closely together here, very interested in this particular topic, who have been working very long hours getting ready for school and with a big technology project going on. So I assume you wanted to make sure to give a shout out to your team?
I did, if you don't want, it might take a couple minutes.
This may be a perfect time for it, yep.
Yes, thank you. This is the team that is committed and dedicated to, this is a committed and dedicated team of special educators who work tirelessly to improve the quality of supports and services for our students with disabilities. And we have Yvonne Barraro, Marissa McCarthy, please stand up, they won't, stand up please so that people can see you.
Please stand up when your name is called.
Yes, please stand up. Jennifer Sweeney, Mary Malloy, Michelle Plast Collins, Phyllis McLean, Tom Lamb, Andrea Elves Thomas, Evelyn Adario, Lema Gerudi, Zachary Houston, Ike Sabaro Sanchez, Erica Andreessen, Steph Monroe, Blake Ryder, Erin Hurley, Greg Zar, and Tony Nurse.
Excellent.
Sorry. And also Christine Panerisi and Thelma Pierce.
So thank you all for joining this evening. And my second is more just a philosophical question. So this committee voted a number of years ago, was a policy that we were going to move as much as possible to full inclusion. And we set the district as a goal, even when we didn't have the budget figured out or anything, we just said you have to move towards it. And through the inclusion task for us, working with SPEDPAC and others, we see the numbers that's happening and I'm extremely encouraged by that. But I also, I know and fellow members as well have had teachers testify to us that said, you don't want to rush to inclusion, you want to do it, it's better to do it right than it is to do it. And, and you can do a full inclusion classroom wrong and you can do it right. Could you just talk to me for a minute about your, your thoughts on that and how you have tried to take that into account?
Sure, absolutely. So I've been able to be fortunate to be here as in different roles, getting to this place and looking at how inclusion was rolled out in Boston. And I wholeheartedly agree that it needs to be done deliberately and with much intention and very mindfully in order to be done right for students, which is why when looking at the data, it looks like small incremental changes, but I know that the mindset shift and the amount of work that has to go into making a successful inclusion classroom is going to be slow to start. What's been exciting is being able to reflect on the data from the last three school years that we had in the presentation and then seeing where we are now. I, it's one of those things that was going to be slow to start and then I think quick to move once that mindset was really starting to shift. And when we have such wonderful support from the school committee and from the city at large about what we mean by inclusion for all, I think that we can only go much faster. So it wasn't, it was slower starting, I think, than we thought it was going to be, but I'm, I think that it, it went at the rate that it should. And then I think we're really ready to launch and take off with making sure that the first thing we're talking about is where our students are in general ed and where they're receiving their services and accommodations.
So talk to me what you see about happening, what are the next couple of steps your department need to make? And how can we continue to increase inclusive opportunities? And something I'm sure Ms. Kane is about to talk about as well, how we have better pathways, because right now it's a little disjointed.
Yes, so definitely the next step to focus on is coherence. I think the first part was the innovation part of really moving something quickly and now we're moving into the coherence and equity piece. So when we look at special ed and what I was speaking about a little earlier, special ed is my passion and I love it, but there's also pieces of it that we really need to look at because it does continue to allow us to perpetuate some inequities that happen in our district. So, not district in our country, just in education in general. So looking at our high incidence disabilities, part of where we are next and the next steps are really looking deeper in a special ed and not really just looking at the superficial piece of we're going to have inclusion, we're going to have kids together in a classroom. But really, what does that mean about students learning from each other more than learning from the teacher? The teachers that are facilitate that piece and really being able to really understand what it means to celebrate and recognize differences rather than just having it be a superficial piece. So that's the next piece that I think we, that we need to push in by way of mindset and what we're doing.
And while I do appreciate, Mr. LaCanto called out Slide Five where you did some breakout for us, I'd still like to see it one step further because you don't have the male-female breakout.
Definitely.
And you know, when I look at, you know, the high incidence for emotional and intellectual impairment for blacks being 10% higher than all students, you know, when we've talked about this in the past, particularly black males.
Yes.
And is there a greater likelihood, I know a lot of studies have been done on this, is there a greater likelihood of kind of some catch-all diagnoses done here? And what is the district doing about that now?
Exactly. So first, identifying and seeing that it's there and calling it out, I think, is one of the first steps towards looking at that and seeing what we've been doing for a while. But then also making sure that we're, that's where we're, that's where Asset is such a great resource for what we need to be doing in special education because the five of us are all coming together. So this is an academics thing that we talk about, this is ELL, this is the opportunity achievement gap, and this is cell wellness. So this is coming together and making sure that we're, we're educating all of our students that in a culturally and susta, culturally and linguistically sustaining way so that we're not finding to your end a catch-all diagnosis or disability.
And I am very heartened by the dropout data. When you look at full inclusion versus substantially separate, I mean, it's-
Exactly.
What Ms. Kane has been saying to us for years, right? It's, this is right in front of us. It is so stark.
Yep.
I mean, how do we not, you know, move as much as we can? But I'm encouraged, you know, when we had, who was it, the teacher Audrey Jackson, right?
Yep.
Inclusive teacher at the Manning, Massachusetts Teacher of the Year, and she came and testified to us and said, do it carefully, don't rush. So I'm glad to hear you're doing that, but, but keep pushing. And I'm glad to hear that you think you're at a stage now of kicking it forward even more. So look forward to a continued improvement on this.
Thank you.
So thank you. My guess is you're going to stay right there as we move right into, we don't have to. But we're actually going to move right to, and these are joint presentations because you do work closely together, but this is also a legally mandated report. It's not why we do it, because it is very important to us, the relationship that the Special Education Department has with SPEDPAC. So Carolyn Kane, the president of SPEDPAC, is going to give an update from the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. Welcome, Ms. Kane. Superintendent Chang, do you have some opening statements to make?
Just very quickly, thank you as always for the partnership with SPEDPAC and as you all know, Carolyn Kane, not only is a co-chair of SPEDPAC, she is also a co-chair of the Working Group on Inclusion and also the Executive Director of Autism Commission for State of Massachusetts. Good to see you as always.
Thank you, Dr. Chang, and thank you, members of the school committee. And first and foremost, I am a parent and tomorrow is the first day of school. So I will be brief and to the point to the extent possible, but I do appreciate the opportunity to be here. You have my slide presentation. I generally don't read from slides, so I'm just going to talk a little bit about what's going on with SPEDPAC. A lot of this will be familiar to you, but some of it I feel is worth repeating, particularly if people happen to be watching from home, which I do on occasion, so that's always helpful. But I just want to start out by first thanking Dr. Chang and Dr. Estrada for really giving Cindy Nielsen the opportunity to shine in the way that I've always known that she can. Cindy's worked in the district for a number of years through some very difficult transitions in the Special Education Department where you always know that somebody has the capacity and the ability to do things, but maybe not the opportunity. So I'm very appreciative that the new administration has allowed those opportunities to happen. And I think that you're seeing the results of that opportunity here tonight. We are making forward progress. Obviously, we would like to make faster progress, but when it comes to special education, it needs to be thoughtful, comprehensive, and deliberate to make sure that the needs of the children are always being put first. I also want to personally, on behalf of SPEDPAC, give a shout out to the team that Cindy already recognized because they're the ones doing the work behind the scenes to make sure that each and every one of our families are getting their needs met. Not only do they work day in and day out to do that, but they also attend our monthly SPEDPAC meetings and work directly with families. I can't tell you what an invaluable resource that has been, from Dr. Estrada to Cindy to all of the people that she named earlier, coming to our meetings and really facilitating and helping parents to understand what the issues are, diving deep into what their problems are and helping to come up with resolutions. That is something that was unprecedented in BPS before my tenure in SPEDPAC, which I do want to say I think is going on my ninth year and I cannot commit to a tenth. But in any event, you know, since I've been in this world, there's been a lot of different changes and we are seeing forward progress. But, you know, with regard to inclusion and what are we doing about it? This is now, I want to say it's my third formal group from, no, it went from Mary Tamer to John Veer to Eileen Nash to now Cindy Nielsen. So while progress is being made, it's also been impacted by the number of different transitions that we've gone through. And what we need to do is allow her an opportunity to really understand at her current level what's been going on and how she can shape that and steer it in the right direction. So I think that's incredibly important. And that, yes, inclusion is, you know, it's, it's not a location, it's an experience and most importantly, it is the law. And we've been behind for far too long in getting children with disabilities integrated with their peers, which we know is what's going to prepare them for future life in an integrated community. Separating them is an incredible injustice unless, of course, it is what their individual needs require. And I'm very mindful of the fact that for some children, that is what they do and will continue to require. But while we've made advances in creating new opportunities for inclusion in the district, particularly at the younger grades, I'm hoping that in the next year and the years to come that, you know, we'll be able to really look at the children who didn't get the advantage of this new wave of inclusion and who were put into substantially separate and have remained there for years, because those are the children that we do see dropping out. Those are the ones who are disengaged, feel like they're not meeting their own potential and we want the opportunity to do that. But I think in looking at that, the biggest issue that comes to my mind is that creating more opportunities for inclusion and particularly creating pathways for inclusion really requires us to have a master facilities plan so that we can have a thoughtful process about where to locate these programs and where we can continue to grow them, because obviously they require additional classrooms and sizes. Children with special education needs require things like sensory rooms and particular therapy rooms. Children need, you know, some of their day may be pulled out or specialized in some way, but we want them to be integrated as much as possible. So we're hopeful that that master facilities plan will provide that opportunity in ways to build new opportunities across BPS, to expand opportunities. I mean, we all know that we have a lot of old-school buildings. You know, my daughter currently goes to the Henderson Opera School. It's also the school that my sister, who happens to be older than me, went to middle school. So things have been around for a while and we really do need to invest in our schools and in our buildings because what those do is they provide new opportunities. So again, I just want to thank Cindy and her team and particularly Dr. Estrada and Dr. Chang for creating these opportunities in special education and giving us a solid team that Cindy's been able to create. And I think that that comes from trust and knowledge and knowing that she has the commitment and the passion to carry us forward. I'm only in BPS for a few more years before my daughter goes into the adult world, but I will do what I can to support her during that time as long as, as long as she stays, which hopefully will be a while. Because I do think that with special education for many years in Boston, since I've been in it now for over 14 years, was something that historically did not get the attention that it deserved, did not get the investment that it deserved, but we've now started to make some real traction. And what we also know is that some parents with children with special needs are seeking out BPS because they know we have better quality of services, particularly in some areas. I mean, when we started this process years ago, we were in horrible non-compliance when it came to ABA services. And, you know, the thought was, okay, well, we'll get rid of our ABA providers and we'll bring in contractors. And I said, well, the children aren't leaving, they're just going to keep coming. So we need to build our internal capacity, not only for financial reasons, but to create a network of individuals who know our system and can work with the people, you know, the other teachers and related service providers. And now we've been able to turn that around and go in the opposite direction. These things do take time, but they're also providing parents with more confidence in the system that has existed in the past. And that's not to say that we don't still have areas that need attention and more focus and more work on the go-forward, but we have a lot more people coming to SPEDPAC now. We have a lot of, we had our board elections in May. We have a very diverse group of parents culturally and linguistically. They came to our meeting that we had a few- They came to our meeting that we had a few weeks ago. I did give them, um, dispensation from coming to my presentation tonight, given that school starts tomorrow. And since if you are presenting, you don't go at the beginning of the meeting, you go more towards the end. And quite frankly, they can watch me on the, um, web or not at all. You know, I pretty much say the same thing all the time, so they'll get used to that. But the role of SPEDPAC really is to work with the district, to create a partnership and to advise the district on special education programs and the development of those programs, because the feedback that you get from parents is, um, it's unparalleled. I mean, no one can tell you about our children more than we can. And working with us helps you better to serve them and helps them to be more successful. We obviously have established a great working relationship with BPS. We continue to have weekly calls with Dr. Estrada and Cindy Nielsen, and also we have, uh, meetings with Dr. Chang four times a year. We do have just under 11,000 students with disabilities in BPS. That's a significant number of families for us try, to try to reach, given that we're a completely volunteer-parent organization. So we do need the continuous support from BPS, and that means at the school level in getting out our notices and sending out those connect ed calls and interpreting materials. And we're grateful for the addition of Tom Lamb to the special education team. He's been very helpful, um, with our meetings. Since Dr. Chang stole Patty Drummy from us, special education, we may not forgive him for that. But, um, in any event, Angie Robry stepped up to the call as well. And, um, you know, I'm thrilled to see that BPS is now gonna do its own additional trainings. For years, I've been doing the majority of the workshops that SPEDPAC does, not because I'm any great public speaker, but because I know the information not only as a parent, but as an attorney. And so I appreciate what it's like to hear the information, parent to parent, in an understandable way. So we actually have a num- we just developed our schedule, uh, for meetings this year along with the topics. And some of the things that we're gonna touch upon are things that were requested by parents in a survey that we did last year. So more focused this time on specific learning disability. There'll be a specific workshop on that. We know that's the highest number of individuals with disabilities in BPS. And also issues relating to older students, like guardianship and social security. We actually were able to connect BPS with, um, someone from the Volunteer Lawyers Project who has offered pro bono services as an attorney to travel to different high schools throughout BPS across the year to educate parents on guardianship, which is a very difficult and complex legal process, particularly for parents who have generally not entered the probate system whatsoever. So we're very thrilled and excited about that. Marissa McCarthy's gonna facilitate connecting her with the principals, because obviously that requires support at the school level. But I can't tell you the amount of admiration and respect I have for someone coming to us and, um, offering to provide those services, knowing that we work with a lot of underserved communities, families who don't understand the process, parents who may have language barriers, and really trying to inform them before they go through that process. Because I'll tell you, I went to probate court recently to file guardianship for my own child. And it is a confusing maze, uh, up there even for somebody who's an attorney. So I think that's a wonderful opportunity. So we'll continue to do our monthly workshops and, uh, connect with, uh, BPS during that time. And then obviously working with inclusion to make sure that the district stays focused on moving that forward, um, because we still remain, despite our best efforts to date, and as a result of numerous transitions, to decrease that number of individuals who currently remain in substantially separate settings. Uh, part of that I talked about was creating these inclusion pathways. I always like to give a shout-out to the Manning. I remember when we went there for the celebration a few years ago, Mr. O'Neil, you and myself and Mr. McDonough, and they were talking then about the need to expand their school. And they do need to expand that school. And part of that relates to sort of the building of the process. But there's other schools that are also doing inclusion now that will continue to need those pathways. So part of what I think about is that strategic planning. I feel like in government, we're always putting out fires and dealing with the current budget cycle that comes with restrictions and limitations and usually deficits that we have to deal with. And there's not an opportunity for any long-term and thoughtful planning. I think that Dr. Chang has said that that's a priority of his. And that's great, because I think that's what's gonna be required to move us forward in a really meaningful way. So we look forward for the facilities plan to come out and working with, you know, you need to know where these kids can go before you develop a plan for them, because we know from missteps in the past that we've committed the same buildings to multiple schools, and that's resulted in a lot of heartache, not only for parents, but for students. So we don't wanna see that repeat. With regard to transition services, that's still, you know, that's... The district has brought on a transition coordinator, Marissa McCarthy. We're happy for her addition, but this is an area that sort of was placed behind ABA and somewhat behind inclusion. So this is really an area of focus where we need to see, um, progress in the, um, next several years. I think the issue is, is that transition is still an area where a lot of districts across the Commonwealth are still getting up to speed. It goes beyond what, um, historically, schools have been equipped to provide and been educated on how to provide. It means taking students out into the real world and out into the community and giving them community experiences and helping them to learn pre-employment skills. You know, skills needed for higher education, and then for some, it's gonna require, um, skills having to do with independent living. So we really wanna focus on that, and part of my goal is also to help connect schools and, um, teams with the resources that exist at the state level. We have the Massachusetts Rehabilitation Commission, who is now required under federal law to dedicate 15% of its funding to transition-age youth. So MRC now has funding, um, with a number of employers on pre-employment skills. And that's for all types of disabilities, but most parents don't know about that. And I know that MRC is, uh, not staffed well at the school level, but helping to educate our special education coordinators with those counselors will help connect our students to additional resources that they're currently entitled to. And then helping them to connect also with, uh, the Department of Developmental Services and even just, um, you know, helping them with the mass health process. A lot of parents have mass health as a cer- um, insurance, whether it's primary or secondary. And there's much more expanded coverage, particularly for students with autism that are now available to parents, but we don't know what we don't know. So helping them learn about those things and helping them, um, connect with those resources for their child, not only during childhood, but throughout their lifetime, is incredibly important. So, um, the other major priorities, um, I would say is also we're very excited about this new IEP process, the new IEP plan. The IEP system that was in place for a number of years was dying a very slow death. I mean, it was more painful than a scene from The Game of Thrones, and no one would just kill it. Finally, it's dead, and we're moving on to something newer and hopefully much better, because it has been extremely painful. We're fine, we're glad that the new administration finally realized that there was no saving the old system, and it was just making everybody's life miserable, not just the parents receiving the IEP, but for the people trying to develop them. So that's very important. And the other thing I'd like to say is that moving forward with special education and particularly inclusion really requires the mandate from the top-down. So from the school committee, from the superintendent, from the administration, all the way down to the school level. But people also need to know how to do it. And really expanding professional development on universal design so that people know how to modify instruction where necessary is incredibly important to keep on the radar on the go-forward. The only other thing I would say is that with regard to, um, you know, sort of the disparity in either children of color or children for whom English is a second language being over-identified or under-identified, a lot of that comes back to, SPED used to be the only game in town aside from general ed. Now we have a tiered system of support. We have social and emotional supports being brought in in a much more comprehensive way, with schools being given toolbox and how to handle these situations. And that should bring about more appropriate referrals to special education. An evaluation should really bear out whether or not a child does have a specific disability and requires special education services, or whether a child just has a higher need in a specific area and needs more support across their day. But every school in BPS should be equipped to handle every child in BPS, because, uh, we are the public school system and we do educate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Open up now to questions and comments for members. Dean Robinson?
I just want to, um, first acknowledge your hard work. I kind of paused when you said this may be your last year, because it's like, what would the district do without Ms. Kane? But your leadership, um, the last decade has just been really encouraging, I know, just personally. Between you and early intervention is where I got my advocacy training. And so I am always forever thankful for the role that you play in supporting the district and also supporting parents. So I first just wanna acknowledge all of your hard work for thousands of families like myself. I also wanted to, um, just ask regarding the SPEDPAC meetings, and, um, you mentioned the, the partnerships with SPED coordinators at the school level. Has there been able to, have you been able to have any type of, um, I don't know, presentation or collaboration with the actual school coordinators so that parents and coordinators can understand how to work best together in a SPEDPAC meeting within those four walls versus parents just learning to navigate the individual, their individual schools and the coordinators there? Have coordinators ever been able to come to meetings to kind of share what that partnership looks like? I don't know if that's for you or for Cindy.
Well, there's certainly, there are open meetings, so they're always welcome. And I would say that a number of, um, SPED coordinators have attended some of our SPEDPAC meetings, but that's certainly something to explore further. We do provide a lot of our, you know, we tape-record our, um, workshops, so it's also something that is available to people online on a 24-hour basis. And that's particularly helpful for our families that can't physically make it to the meetings. But that's something that I can certainly explore further with, um, with Cindy and Dr. Estrada.
Yeah, I've, I've seen the benefits of just those partnerships on the school levels. And, you know, the resources, um, the partnerships with best buddies. You find out about those things sometimes more or less either from another parent or from the coordinator. Um, I found out about Camp Shriver through the coordinator, would've never known about it. Um, and so there are some great partnerships and resources that I think, you know, as we continue expanding that communication. Um, again, great work, and thank you for all you do for our kids.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Mr. LaCanto?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Kane. I, uh, just wanted to echo, uh, Dean Robinson's thanks for your, uh, your continuing leadership at, uh, SPEDPAC. And, um, yes, um, you know, all thing, all good things must come to an end at some point, but, uh, let, let us hope that that...
I didn't say I was leaving, I just didn't promise another year.
I'm just telling you, just, let's hope that day is still long off.
I like you to think that I'm always gonna be here.
You got at least four more years, right? But in any case, um, I, you know, I, I thought it was great particularly to hear that, um, you know, under your leadership, the, uh, SPEDPAC has grown both in numbers and in diversity. You know, to reflect, um, certainly the, um, uh, the population of our district, and I, I think that's very important. You know, typically, um, those who feel like they haven't been heard are those that are excluded from processes or feel like they've been excluded from processes. So working hard to make sure that, uh, all voices across the district are part of our conversations is important to us. And, um, certainly, a group such as yours that's so close to the parent, um, population is very important.
I think too, that I just wanna add to that is that I, we've expanded the, um, the diversity on our board, which, let's be honest, it's a volunteer position, right? People already have kids and jobs to deal with. But I, I would want the, uh, the school committee to know that at our SPEDPAC meetings, 90% of the people that attend those meetings are people of color and people for whom English is a second language. The district is always supportive of providing interpretation services for any language requested. So I do think that we're providing an opportunity that, um, di- didn't exist before to this extent, but the word's getting out. And so we're seeing more and more families who, um, are hearing from other families that this is really a valuable resource. I can't blame them for not having the time to also be on the board, which is a lot of work. But I, I'm, I'm satisfied just knowing that we're reaching them and helping them, because my goal in being on SPEDPAC is to help people to avoid the challenges and difficulties that I encountered when I entered the special education world, which doesn't come with a roadmap or a handbook. And to really try to make changes at a higher level to just make life that much better for families and for their children, so... But it does require a lot of, um, hours. I would say that I'm well into over 1,000 hours already, and, um, you know, it's just difficult. And I, I just happen to be fortunate that I'm able to do it, um, for as long as I can.
Well, thank you again. And, um, you know, one other item I just wanted to note was, you know, I appreciate so much time that you spent in your presentation tonight on Build BPS and the efforts to, um, renovate and expand the district and, and make, you know, just more cohesive sense out of, uh, the buildings and the pathways in our, uh, in our district. And, um, I know many SPEDPAC, um, members played a role in the, um, community meetings that the Build BPS, uh, project, uh, held, uh, earlier this year. And I think, you know, what you spoke to was, um, a common theme that you heard, you know, irrespective of where you were coming from as a parent, you know, whether, um, it be that you have a child in general education, you were looking at one of the specialty schools, uh, one of the exam schools, if you had a language issue, um, if it was a cultural issue, if it was a special education issue. Everyone in this system is crying out for some level of, um, understanding. Some common thread of knowing when they enter the system that, um, you know, absent either a need or a, um, a skill or an interest, there's gonna be a reasonable understanding of where that child progressed over a number of years. And so, you know, certainly understanding, um, we have our overlays that relate to ELL, our overlays that relate to SPED certainly, um, that extend across the district. Those are still works in progress. And, you know, certainly, we're gonna have some feedback on how those have been working since Homebase was, um, implemented. And, um, we look forward to having, uh, continued support and, um, participation from SPEDPAC in having those conversations and better understanding how we can, we can tweak that bit, both with, um, the existing assignment program that we have in place and, um, the thoughts that we are, um, uh, trying to bring together right now to build a cohesive plan for the buildings going forward. So thank you so much for making that a, uh, a focus for SPEDPAC as well.
Thanks. Well, I mean, I know firsthand how painful it was to get the Henderson School expanded from K-25 to K-22. It took many years and hundreds of hours. What I think about is that if my child was entering the Manning School this week, tomorrow, or next Monday, and then not knowing at fifth grade where my child's gonna go. Other children have more options. Children in special education and children in these inclusion pro- programs need to have more options and pathways. But we need to know where we can put them in order to develop those programs and to make sure that they're quality programs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Ms. Kane, you and me both, nine years. You have taught me an incredible amount about the needs of the special, uh, students with disabilities. And so I thank you for the work that you do. And I'm sure it's a lot more than 1,000 hours unless you're talking about per year.
Yeah.
So, um, thank you for what you do, and the other members of your board as well. And, uh, two quick questions for you. One, is there anything more that either this committee and/or the district leadership can do to help build SPEDPAC as an organization? You, you know, we ask every school leader who comes before us if they have a representative to SPEDPAC. But is there anything more the district can do? I know you mentioned about at the meetings, you know, more and more of the parents of students with disabilities are finding out that it's an important resource. But the more you represent as many of those 11,000 as possible, you know, the better it is for those parents as well, so...
Yeah, well, I like to think we represent all of them, whether or not they're physically present at any of our meetings or not.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I meant it the other way around, to make sure that they're aware of those resources.
Well, what we're trying to do is we're trying to build capacity so that those of us who've been on the board for a number of years, who will eventually transition out, that we're working with other parents to sort of help them understand the process. And, you know, nobody can be somebody else, but you just be yourself and do the best that you can do, and that's all we ask. And I think that the issue of, you know, it's really hard, because what we do is we provide opportunities for parents to learn and to get information. And whether or not parents take, take that opportunity is up to them. It's an individual choice. But we also have provided it in different mediums. I would say that we still struggle with, at the school level, um, getting those flyers out, where some schools are excellent at it, and some schools you'd think they never received it. And so I think that needs to be more of a mandate from the superintendent, because... And so I think that needs to be more of a mandate from the superintendent because it's more of an issue of the principals are the ones in the school buildings executing what goes home. And we all know our kids come home with a lot of paperwork. But if we could get our flyers out too, it's going to reach a few more families. And, you know, it's going to be sort of a building process. Because when I started in SPEDPAC, parents were very disengaged. So it has been a building process. And, you know, I fully understand how challenging it is to go out to meetings and have that opportunity to be in those. So I'm happy if they can make the monthly workshops as opposed to participating on the board. We certainly need to do more work in recruiting more parents. So obviously, if anybody in the administration or out there in their respective schools know of parents who would like to play a role on SPEDPAC, we're all a bunch of volunteers that welcome everybody, so. And I think that, you know, maybe just helping to spread the word about us and what we do. I'll be honest, I don't know that many people watch these meetings on the Neighborhood Network. I'm one of them, but I don't think we're a big group. So just helping parents to learn.
I have actually been surprised over the years to find out how many people do watch the meetings and comment on it.
I only heard from the lady that used to take me at voter registration, that she saw me on TV, and she was over 80, so I was like, someone does watch.
I am actually surprised, there's a lot of people connected with the school system that watch these meetings and comment on it to us all the time, so.
I'm just thinking it's not the parent's first choice of what they're watching or their child's.
It's not Game of Thrones. And the second question is, and I am really interested in this, though I know what I've always enjoyed about my working relationship with you, and we've served on many committees together, is you are always pushing and advocating as much as possible. You're also very pragmatic about this is the right next step, even though we want here, this is the right step to get us there. And so I want to hearken back to the conversation I had with Ms. Nielsen before about inclusion. And as much as we want to have as many students as possible move to it, and you are always appropriately pointing out to us, it is the law. It's not just the right, it's the right thing and the law. But we started to have a conversation about doing it right versus just pushing to do it as much as possible.
Yeah, well, if you do it wrong, it's not meaningful inclusion. You just move somebody from one location to the other.
Which is obviously not the goal. So any advice for the district and for this committee as we continue to advocate for that?
I really think that reinforcing with our principles that inclusion is the mandate. So while you may not be prepared for it at the moment, you're going to get prepared for it, and that's going to come through professional development for staff. And that, you know, it's going to be a process, but we need to make it a priority to provide that professional development, or that inclusion will never be meaningful. Because we've just never had the capacity on a district-wide basis to provide that level of instruction in the modified way. But we also need to take much better advantage of the ability of technology to support us in the classroom in providing that specialized instruction in ways that didn't exist when I started out on my journey of special education. There's so many more tools now that doesn't require as much manpower in the classroom to provide that modified and individualized instruction. We just haven't kept pace with what's available to us. So hopefully, you know, hopefully, things will get better financially, or we can redirect some finances to things that will not only support our teachers, but most importantly, support our students. Because having lived at the Henderson for so many years and seeing the opportunities that do exist, and I'm not just talking about for my own child who's, you know, in that highest level of need area, but for students across the board and seeing them being integrated into that classroom and learning at their own level through a very, you know, minimal level of effort in terms of modified instruction because of the ability of technology to assist with that. I mean, when my daughter started out doing ABA services, I can't tell you how many things I printed and laminated, and some of them worked and some of them didn't. And now it's all on the iPad and they exist, the programs. I mean, God bless Steve Jobs, he created a lot of opportunities for kids with disabilities. But we need to get those into the classrooms and into the hands of the educators, along with the training on how to use them effectively.
Excellent, great. Thank you, as always, for the close partnership. Thank you, Ms. Nielsen as well, and to all of your team that are here tonight. Thank you to the members of the-
I won't be staying, I'm going home to put my daughter to bed.
Yes, and thank you to the members of the SPEDPAC board who are watching at home. We do appreciate their work. We'll move on now to our next presentations on the tentative Boston Teachers Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. At this time, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Human Capital, Ella Emily Quazalbash, to please step forward with her presentation. She'll be joined by Erica G. Pietro, Director of Long-Term Planning. Superintendent Chang, do you have some opening comments to make?
Yes, very quickly. Erica and Emily today will be presenting to the school committee the details of a tentative agreement between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston Teachers Union, which was agreed upon in the early morning hours of August the 24th. It is a two-year agreement, which were active from September 1st, 2016, and it will end August 31st, 2018. You will hear the specifics, sorry, you'll be hearing about the specifics of this agreement, which is both an important step towards a more long-term contract addressing many of the issues that we have consistently prioritized. And part of opening the school year with our collective focus and energy concentrating on the needs of our students. So very excited to be able to have come to this TA with the Boston Teachers Union and appreciate their partnership and all this work. Turn it over to Emily and Erica. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Erica G. Pietro, Managing Director of Long-Term Planning, and this is Emily Calais Quazalbash, Assistant Superintendent of Human Capital. We are here tonight, like Dr. Chang said, to share with you the details of the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the Boston Teachers Union. And I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are here representing a larger negotiating team, some members of whom are here with us tonight and others who are not, Dave Murphy, Eleanor Lorenz, David Bloom, Zach Scott, Kristin Daly, and Ross Wilson, who was here with us for most of the process. Our team represents a cross-section of departments, and we spent nearly 40 negotiating sessions together with the Boston Teachers Union over the last year and a half. The tentative agreement that we bring to you tonight is a short-term contract. It's an attempt to lay the foundation to grapple with more complex issues and items that while we discussed at length over this process, we did not fully resolve to the level of our satisfaction. But it's an important step. We're pleased to be able to provide these two years of wage increases to teachers while we continue to negotiate for the longer term. And we'll describe, we have made progress in some areas. This is part of opening the school year with our collective focus and energy concentrated on the needs of our students. So tonight, our presentation will highlight various aspects of the tentative agreement. And as always, we're happy to take your questions at the end. Like Dr. Chang said, the tentative agreement was reached in the early morning hours of August 24th. Tonight, we are sharing some details of that, or all details of that tentative agreement. And a week from today, at your next meeting, you are scheduled to vote on that and the supplemental request for funding. That's the same day that the BTU is also presenting the contract to be ratified by their membership. Key basic information about the contract is, again, it's a two-year contract. You can see the dates on this slide, but overall, it covers the 1617 school year that just ended and the 1718 school year that is beginning now. And it awards a 2% wage increase for last year and a 3% wage increase for the coming year.
Great, great. As Erica mentioned, the district has achieved some modest but important reforms to staffing that we believe will eventually lead to direct and positive impact on students. We do want to take a moment to highlight those here. Most importantly, mutual consent hiring has been protected, in fact, solidified, in this tentative agreement. Codifying mutual consent ensures that every single open teacher position going forward can be filled through the process that we've called mutual consent hiring, where teachers choose to apply to jobs that match their skill set, and then school hiring teams select the strongest candidate for the job. Boston Public Schools is one of the first urban districts in the country to solidify this hiring practice in our collective bargaining agreement. What this means is that BPS will continue to ensure that principals and their hiring teams have the discretion to hire the best candidate for each job, rather than the district force-placing teachers with school leaders in schools to take specific jobs on their staffs. This formalizes a practice that we have in place because we know that there is no more important decision that a school leader and hiring team makes than selecting a teacher with a background rich in experience, racial, cultural, or linguistic diversity, growth mindset, and proven outcomes with students. We have found that this approach to staffing BPS schools has an enormously beneficial impact on the quality of instruction and the student experience, as you have heard me speak about many times before. Specifically, under the terms of this tentative agreement, the contract would be amended to relieve the district of its obligation to attach a stipend of $1,250 in exchange for additional duties for each individual teacher hired through the mutual consent process. This amendment will save the district approximately $500,000 each year that we implement a hiring process of about this size. In addition to the formalization of mutual consent hiring for teachers, according to the terms of this tentative agreement, BPS will have discretion to appropriately staff paraprofessional positions with individuals most qualified to provide support and services to students with autism and emotional impairments, rather than be compelled to force-place paras into these positions that need highly skilled educators. This change represents mutual consent hiring for about 20% of our paras. What this means on the ground is that principals are empowered with greater discretion to select paras who are working with some of our most vulnerable students with the highest needs. This change has the potential to have a direct and significant impact on students with autism or emotional impairment. In addition, we have added positions in the area of restorative practices to ensure the district's approach to this work continues in alignment with the BPS Code of Conduct and reflects the district's and community's values. Finally, in this tentative agreement, we've increased our investment in school nurses to create safe, healthy, and welcoming learning environments for all students. These next two slides continue to provide an overview of the context, content of the tentative agreement. I'll highlight just one item on this slide and then one item on the next. Our goal in BPS is to recruit and retain top-tier educators. To do that, we need to provide a favorable work environment. By expanding the city's leave policy, as we've done in this tentative agreement, we advance our objective of being competitor, competitive in educator recruitment. An area of shared interest between the BTU and BPS continues to be advancing our system of teacher leadership. By reallocating contractually committed dollars, this provision repurposes the teacher leadership fund in the contract to ensure greater flexibility and to provide for a more targeted provision of resources and positions that we think will maximize the impact of teacher leadership. Erica and I welcome your questions and discussions about these items that we've dug into and other items that you may want to know about.
Thank you both. Opening up now to members' questions and comments. Mr. LaCanto, as you were the school committee representative to the negotiating team, do you have any comments on this as well?
Sure, and thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, Ms. G. Pietro and Quazalbash. So, yeah, I don't have any questions, but I certainly have a few comments. And, you know, I just want to reflect a little bit on, you know, the deal that's before us that we'll be voting on next week. And so, you know, a couple of thoughts. First of all, I want to thank Secretary Treasurer Betsy Drynan, one of the new officers of BTU, for being here tonight in the audience. And I think that's indicative of the effort that was put into the negotiation of this deal and frankly, the good labor relations that have been an undercurrent throughout this negotiation and the relationship going forward. So I think we reached a reasonable and pragmatic deal. No one ever gets everything they want in a negotiation, and so, you know, we certainly understand that and enter it with wide eyes, and I think that the union does certainly as well. But nevertheless, we've come up with a deal that is financially viable, takes care of a number of issues that are of operational concern for the district, and tries to make this a relationship that moves forward in several respects. Having said that, you know, our priorities remain as a district, and we understand that priorities remain for the union as well. We'll be back to the table very soon, once again. This is a contract that goes through the end of this academic year. And so, you know, thinking about a number of the items that we couldn't reach agreement on, those become our priorities when we return to the table. And those will continue to be our priorities, and those are things that we will attack once again and try to reach a agreement on modifications to our working conditions that are in the best interest of both our teachers and our students and put, as with everything in our district, puts a primary focus on the effects on our students. So the only other thing I think I'd leave with is just, you know, circling back to that comment about good labor relations, you know, I'm, I, both parties bargained hard here. You know, there's always opportunities to, you know, get exasperated or, you know, get a little upset when somebody says something that you don't agree with at the table, that's part of negotiations. But both parties came to this in a meaningful way and argued for what they believe was in the best interest of their constituencies. And we reached agreement, you know, nobody imposed this on us. This wasn't the product of any sort of unfair advantage on either side. This was the product of labor and management coming together and making an agreement. And we walk away with a productive relationship that remains. And I note that, you know, the foundation of this agreement where we started, you know, almost 18 months ago, I believe, was a training on space bargaining. And we brought in outside trainers from Cornell. We sat together as a group, I think it was probably about 80 of us between labor and management, that sat through a day-long training and thought about the way that we, the architecture that we wanted to create for this negotiation. And that formed the basis for us to cut through a lot of the traditional adversarial way that negotiations happen. And we had some real meaningful agreements that came out of that approach. Of course, you know, there's, everything always breaks down at the money, right? So we didn't apply that approach to everything in this deal, but certainly, I think, we were able to take those principles and reach some common sense agreements on a number of the items that you've listed in the presentation tonight. And again, I think it gets us very close on a number of other issues that we couldn't necessarily reach agreement on right now, but we have an understanding of where the respective parties sit on a number of issues and what our core concerns are. And so I think that sets us up again very well for the next round of bargaining. And we look forward certainly to developing our relationship with the new board at the union and working together for a long time to come.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. On behalf of your fellow members, thank you for the amount of time you put into this, including briefing us consistently so that we were up to speed and accepting feedback from us on the priorities of this committee, and then making sure the negotiating team is fully aware of it. Open up to other questions, Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you. I too would like to thank Mr. LaCanto for all his time and everybody who came to the negotiating table. And not to repeat everything you've said, but, you know, I think we've come to some places. I'm excited about the restorative practice pieces. I think that's really wonderful addition to what we've been trying to do with our social emotional learning and our code of conduct and really trying to further our student engagement and have practices that, you know, Dr. Chang, when he first came in, I remember the first time I ever met him, and he talked about, you know, classrooms being the same as they were, you know, in the 1900s. And so this kind of thing is really helping us to move the way we actually educate our students in a different way and really taking into, really taking into effect what, how they feel and how the struggles they have. And so I'm just very excited about that. And obviously, the nursing piece, although, again, it's not exactly where we want to be. I agree that, you know, we have a working relationship and- I agree that, um, you know, we have a working relationship and that is really important for me and I know for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Dean Robinson.
I just want to, um, echo appreciation, um, to the entire team, um, and thank you, Michael, for being a part of this process as well. I do just, I, I feel encouraged, um, that the bottom line is our kids and the people that we have in front of our kids really does matter. So, thank you for keeping that at, at the forefront, nurses, paraprofessionals, folks who are helping us really advance restorative practices. The people in front of our children matter, um, so that they can succeed. So you all are keeping that as your focus and your bottom line, and so I appreciate, um, the support from, you know, Michael and, and his leadership, but also your entire team to keeping that, the bottom line being the bottom line. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to simply state, I hear the messages from the members and also others that have spoken to us about this contract. To me, this is a reasonable, prudent interim step, but it is exactly that, isn't it, interim step? We're now, if, if, if we vote to approve this at our next meeting, we'll now be less than a school year away from an expiring contract and starting all over again. So it is important to get back to the table, and yes, there were lessons learned from this, and there will be a somewhat new and refreshed negotiating team on the superintendent's behalf, as President Tang and her senior members of, of her team will be, you know, refreshing their team as well, and we'll be able to step back and take a fresh step at this. But we have some critical issues that still need to be resolved, that we were unable to resolve, um, at this, uh, negotiating, um, effort. And issues that this committee believes firmly, we cannot continue to improve the district unless we reach resolution on these issues. And so, uh, you know, we agreed on kind of the easy stuff right now, but this is, it sets us up, this next set of discussions is going to be challenging, and it will be great to take a different approach if we can institute the interest-based learning, interest-based negotiating, and with the fresh teams working on it. But these are issues that this committee has decided is critical to our success to move the district forward, and these will be key issues at the next round of negotiations. Having said that, I am in complete agreement with, uh, the approach that has been put in front of us this evening as far as this two-year agreement and, um, the agreements that we have around restorative justice, around, uh, the nurses, around, um, the increase for the coverage on paraprofessionals, uh, you know, that are out, as well as, um, you know, codifying the changes, uh, in the assign, in the assignment of teachers, et cetera, and some of the changes in the paraprofessional pool. So, I think this is reasonable and prudent. It does not diminish in any way the challenges we still have in front of us for the next round, or the importance of the viewpoint that the committee has taken on several of these key issues that the district has represented so well and will continue to represent, Superintendent. So, thank you for the work that you have done and to your entire team, several members who are here that were there at 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, um, with the lights going out, and just as at school committee members, so they went out, school committee meetings, we had the lights go out once, and we had this go out at, what was it, 10:20, 10:30 they went out in Department of Labor Relations? But we kept going. So thank you, Superintendent, and for your whole team on this work, and the committee looks forward to taking action at this on our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just have a very brief, uh, brief update now on the superintendent's school year 2016-17 performance evaluation process. Uh, and so Dean Robinson, who leads this effort on behalf of the committee, is just going to give us a very, very brief update. Excuse me?
Residency? Did we skip that?
Oh, I'm sorry. We missed that one. Thank you.
That'll be brief, too.
Why don't we, since I already introduced it, Dean Robinson, could you just give the very brief update on the, um, evaluation process, and then we'll go to the residency?
Yes. So, um, as the committee knows, um, we spent, um, the month of August. I really appreciate Dr. Chang and his leadership team and the staff underneath the leadership team for, um, compiling all of the comprehensive artifacts and evidence, so that, as you know, has been in the, um, school committee, um, meeting area. Um, and we've been taking the time, and it does require time because it is comprehensive, and, um, it's, he's done an excellent job with his team, having, um, all the thorough work, um, representing what they've done this past year. But what I have been able to see that in light of the schedules that we have had as school committee members, um, in the start of the school year, um, and different responsibilities, I'd like to extend, um, the time for you all to, um, move forward in your evaluations, writing your composite evaluations to the October 4th meeting, so that you have time to go through the documents that are in the school committee, um, meeting area, um, and, you know, to write your thoughtful evaluations. I know initially, we had this September 13th, um, but now that the dates have been changed, we want to give you all plenty of time. I know Ms. Robinson isn't here tonight, um, and, and connecting with her, she has also agreed that that would help, um, just with the scheduling, but also with the change of the school committee date. So, October 4th will be when we, I share the composite that you all have written in your evaluations, and then October 25th will be the vote.
And so when do you want the?
Yeah, written.
The week before October 4th. Let me, the, yes.
Old people need help here.
All.
Four. No, 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 hold on, hold on.
Let me pull the calendar.
Hold on.
September 27th.
September 27th is the week.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be late, so I would say the 22nd.
The 22nd, September 22nd?
September 22nd.
Friday.
If you could have your, um, initial individual assessments, all of which are public documents, I remind members, uh, if you could have those, please, to Dean Robinson by Friday, September 22nd.
Correct. I was looking at our meeting schedule because that's when we're meeting in public, but yes.
That'll allow Dean Robinson to put it together in a composite matter and then have it back out to all of us in our packages and ready for the October 5th meeting. Okay?
Does that work for committee members?
Just a point of, uh, process, Senator Dean Robinson?
Uh, Ms. Sullivan, please.
Okay.
Ms. Sullivan. And then I will, I will meet with her and compile.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for putting it together.
Great. And so then we will, so all members will have their individual assessments, which, again, I remind everyone, end up being public documents and are published at the end, along with the composite ones, to Ms. Sullivan by Friday, September 22nd. And then Dean Robinson will present a compiled one, along with the individual ones, at the meeting on Wednesday, October 4th, for discussion. And then we will actually vote on the final assessment at the meeting on Wednesday, October 25th.
Correct.
That a schedule that's agreeable to everybody? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our last presentation, which is a deadline for residency verification for exam schools. At this time, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Engagement, Monica Roberts, and Executive Director of Welcome Services, Robert Havdala, to please step forward. But first, Superintendent Chang, do you have some opening remarks on this?
Yes, this should be a fairly short presentation. Monica Roberts and Robbie Havdala will discuss a proposal to change the deadline for residency verification for non-BPS students from the first Friday in November to the third Friday in November. And this ultimately will enable non-BPS students to take the ISEE for the full duration of time that BPS students are able to take the test. So, they'll go over some of the details, and we look forward for a vote in our next school committee meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Good evening, Chairman O'Neill and all the members of the school committee. As Dr. Chang said, we wanted to present a proposal to change the, uh, BPS exam school residency verification process. This would apply only to non-BPS students, as, um, existing students in the Boston Public Schools are not required to verify their residency to take the ISEE. So currently, um, the deadline for non-BPS students to verify their address falls before the first BPS administration of the ISEE. Non-BPS students have no opportunity to take the BPS test if they do not first verify, um, their residency. This is true even though the BPS offers a makeup exam two weeks after the initial administration. Some, uh, non-BPS students opt to take the ISEE with a national provider and are allowed to take the test regardless of whether they have verified their residency. The national provider ERB does, um, notify families that BPS does have requirements around residency, but it's up to the family to follow through, and, um, the information is not as easily available through ERB all the time. So if they have not verified residency by the deadline, um, their ISEE scores are not accepted, and they are ineligible to apply for exam school entrance. This is the proposed change. We'd be looking to move from the first Friday in November, which is the, uh, day before the first administration of the test, to the third Friday in November, which is the day before what we call the BPS makeup test, or the final day for which a, any student looking to enter, enter an exam school can take the ISEE. In terms of the timeline, it would remain the same with the exception that the verification process closes, again, the third Saturday in November instead of the first Saturday in, in November for this school year. That would look like, um, November 17th would be the proposed day for closing the residency verification process, which is the day before November 18th, the last day to take the ISEE. In terms of the impact of this on students, there are a number of Boston families legitimately living and residing in Boston who, um, do not, are unable to participate in the exam school process, unable to apply because they do not verify residency by the first Saturday in November, um, and there is no recourse to take, to, to verify after currently due to the policy, and therefore to take the test up until the, um, third Saturday in November, like BPS students. So this would in fact give, um, non-BPS students the opportunity to verify all the way up until the day before the final date that they could take the exam and give them a greater opportunity. We would combine this with greater outreach around communications from our office. We're also working with the national provider to, um, also boost their efforts so that families are aware of the residency process, but we're finding that a lot of families realize that there is a residency, um, process when they come to the first, um, test administration. That's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions?
Open up to members for questions. Dr. Ariate?
I mean, I'm gonna trust you on this, that you think this is good. I can't understand the purpose. Why would you want to expand for non-BPS students?
So, um, these are all Boston residents who are looking for entrance into Boston Public Schools. The, the best example I can give is you may sign up for the test and come on the day of administration, so that first, um, Saturday in November, and we will turn you away if you have not resi- verified residency. Um, and you may ask, can I take the makeup test? And the answer is no. And so what we're finding is that families have been getting mixed information from the schools that they attend, um, or just very, you know, word of mouth, and so part of what we're hoping to do is just give families an equal opportunity, uh, to verify their residency and then take the exam up until the last day that we actually allow for families to take the exam, if they're allowed to take it up to the 18th. Um, this will allow them to do so.
So I, I do want to point out a couple, excuse me for one second, Dr. Eric, Dr. Ariate, a couple of things that you didn't mention in your comments. So for students to apply to any other Boston Public School, they only have to show their residency by today, right? When they register at school. So if they're, if they're registering at Boston Arts Academy or any elementary school, it is only for the exam schools
Yes.
that we require them to prove, have proof of residency at the time they take the exam.
Before they take the exam.
For non-BPS students.
For non-BPS.
For non-BPS, because BPS students, we, they have shown that, once they're in BPS, they're showing that they're in. So we can't forget, as, as much as we are all loyal to BPS and we want our BPS students to get into our exam schools, we cannot forget that all of our schools are open to all residents of Boston. And so just as the parent who spoke to us earlier today, whose child goes to KIP, she, her child has an equal right to get into the exam schools or one of our other high schools, um, as a BPS student. Obviously, we want to be loyal to those that have been loyal to us, and we want, um, to encourage more BPS students attending the exam schools, but we can't forget that those that are residents have an equal right to attend our schools. Having said that, as Counselor Asabi George pointed out before, you know, we also don't want people who are cheating, who live in, not in Boston, and yet are trying to get in, in particular to our exam schools, but by the way, they're doing it to some of our highly sought-after elementary schools and Boston Arts Academy, and, you know, we can name some other high schools that we know, that we have seen examples where people try to get into, because we have schools that students want to go to. And if you live outside of Boston and you go to one of our schools, you are stealing from Boston residents, plain and simple, because we are paying to educate you and you're taking seats away from our students, and that's robbery. And so, you know, we need to figure out what the right mix is, and this committee has in the past put in place the policy, and this was a big discussion a few years ago, to move to this, where, whereas not, it used to be for the exam schools, you had to prove residency at acceptance,
Yes.
as I recall. And then we moved it, predecessor committee moved it to the exam time, which was quite controversial at the time, but it's appropriate, that this was, in fact, tightened up who could be eligible for our exam schools. And so now this is a slight twist from, you know, the beginning in November, to you're trying to get to this makeup, just, just the day before the makeup day.
Yes.
But we're, we're treading a fine line here, right? Where my wife always says to me, assume good intent. So for those who are truly residents of the city and now, who child may have attended a private or parochial or a charter school and now wants to apply for an exam school, we have to give them an honest right to do it, but we also want to be very, very strict and diligent in weeding out those who are trying to take advantage of us and taking away seats from our students. So, sorry, I got, I just wanted to clarify that issue and give a little bit of the history on this, because when I first started, I scratched my head too, in saying, why? Dr. Ariate?
I, I would leave it as it is, because, I mean, to me, I mean, the message that you're giving is that it's a, it's one of privilege to people that are not in BPS, and we already know that we're concerned about the percent of BPS students that actually enter the exam schools. And, you know, so that I'm, again, I'm, I'm not seeing the rationale, gonna trust you on this, but I don't see the rationale.
Mr. Locato? Mr. Locato, do you have a comment?
So just a quick question. Do we keep any data on, you know, for instance, families that register for the test but don't sit for the test, or register for the test but don't submit residency data in time, um, or residency veri- verification in time? So we understand, like, what the proportion is of this problem, or is it more of an anecdotal one?
So we, currently we do keep data on who registers but does not, um, attend.
Uh-huh.
I don't believe we collect who's been turned away because of residency. It's one of the things that we're hoping to start collecting this year. It was brought to my attention, um, because this past year was my first time administering the test under my office, and so, um, we got a lot of calls, both in our office, the superintendent's office, I think across the board from families who had gone, um, and my staff who were on site the day of, um, kind of spoke to the number of families who came the day of and returned away.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I know I've heard these stories before, and I know that there are people that miss the test, and I think, you know, in your mind's eye, you conjure up the idea of, you know, somebody that's maybe in a private or parochial school that's paying money, um, and, you know, has essentially mobility options, um, for the schools that they attend. And so, um, you know, I, I understand the feeling that, you know, this, this is, um, you know, perhaps giving more than we should as stewards of this system, but at the same time, uh, you know, if those people are legitimate residents, they are taxpayers of the city of Boston. And quite frankly, you know, taking wealth and privilege out of it, um, there are many students that are parts, uh, that are, that are in our charters across the system as well, that, uh, excuse me, across the city as well, that I would suspect are not getting a consistent message, um, from their home schools, um, or from, you know, whatever other parent groups they might be in, be it, um, you know, a language barrier or a cultural barrier, or, you know, any other number of, um, types of barriers that can present themselves. So, you know, from my perspective, you know, providing a little bit more time, particularly when somebody might reg- when somebody might register for the test and show up and be turned away and have absolutely no recourse, you know, giving somebody a lifeline here so that they can prove their legitimacy and have a second chance is a nice move forward.
Any questions or comments?
I can see that point of view. I guess for me, it's not, I don't feel that it's an unfair process already. There's a date, like in any application that you go to, if it's a summer camp, we're all parents, we know there's deadlines. I just don't see adding two weeks, I guess. For me, I struggle because we already, when we look at the exam schools and we look at who's going to the exam schools and we just saw the recent Boston Latin Report, and the number of Latino students and Black and African-American students has not increased over a significant amount of time. If you were to tell me that it's a strategy for recruiting more students of color, more ELL students, then I would say okay, but it seems that it's more a question of information sharing versus an actual date, you know, giving, I just, it doesn't make sense to me how we're getting to actually have more BPS students and more BPS students that are students of color and, again, ELL students that are attending our exam schools. So it doesn't, I just don't feel like it's already an unfair process if there's a deadline. It's like any deadline in life. If I miss it, I miss it.
Dean Robinson, any comments? No, you don't have to.
Well, I just, I think that this could be an opportunity if the strategy is to really reach out to Black and Latino families to increase. So maybe this is additional information for you all to take back to your teams and think about a strategic plan of how those weeks matter. I agree with the different opinions, but I, as you alluded to earlier, I want to trust the teams that are getting most of the information. And so if you put together even a stronger strategic goal of how can we outreach to families more, you know, engagement's in your name, it's in your DNA, so I can trust that you all can get it done.
I'm laughing at that engagements in your name, right? Dean Coleman?
Well, we could always just start by eliminating the exam and just have it make part of the choice system, but that's a different subject.
Oh, wow. It's too late for that one.
Let's keep on topic, Dean Coleman.
Couldn't resist. I'm going to assume that this whole registration process does not disadvantage people who have DACA students or have immigrant issues, it's just residency, right? So just residency.
This is just about residency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, I think you want to make some comments?
Yeah, I want to maybe apologize for just not giving a little bit more context. We obviously have three exam schools in Boston Public Schools that are grade seven through 12, that are highly in demand. A lot of parents choose these schools, not just because of their reputation, but because they also provide six years of continuous cohesive instruction for families. The barrier for access to these three exam schools for us, we should not only consider barriers for Boston Public Schools, we need to consider barriers for all students, all residents in the city of Boston. And we will collect this data, but I know because of all the phone calls that I get that those who do not get information about this residency requirement are typically not parents who have access or are paying for school, grades K through six. They're typically parents who are, who have their students in other programs in the city of Boston who are Black and Latino and low income. And so when I have received advocacy about inability to take the exam because they have not verified their residency before the makeup test, they're typically from our schools in neighborhoods are most marginalized, so I can attest to that.
What type of schools?
So let's just say you have a child who is attending a charter school in Manapan and they want to, they want their child to take this exam, find out that there's a residency requirement at the first exam, right before the first exam, they're turned away during that first exam and they're told, you can come back for the makeup exam, but if you don't have your residency requirement, you actually can't come back. And that's heartbreaking. And so we're saying, you've got two weeks, verify your, if we pass this policy, if the school committee makes that decision, then they can go and get their verification, their residency verified by the welcome center literally in minutes and be able to go back and take the exam during the makeup, which will be the third
Saturday.
Third Saturday in November, so.
I mean, what I have heard about anecdotally is, if that's
Anecdotally.
Anecdotally, thank you. It's getting late, I'm still on Italian time.
That's a good Italian word.
Thank you. Is of school leaders who are not exactly wild about having some of their students take exam schools and leave. And that happens within BPS from some of our K to eight leaders you hear about reluctantly. It also happens from charter school leaders. And so children are privileged, you know, I'm going to be very blunt about this, children are privileged with highly engaged parents, don't well know what the deadline is, and this is not an issue for them.
But that's a different presentation than what we just heard.
I agree with you completely. And so the feedback from the committee has been clear of do some tracking on this and if this is a strategy to help reach out more to charter school students who maybe are not being encouraged by the charter school, why you should really consider the exam, but they hear of it, they go to take it, now all of a sudden they're turned down because they didn't know there was a residency date, and now we're actually hurting the pool that we would be interested in encouraging? That's a different message of we're just trying to make it easier for folks.
Exactly.
Ms. Chair, can I, can I just ask perhaps?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. For, you know, a little bit more data that, along the lines of what I was asked for earlier, you know, perhaps before we take a vote on this, I think we're scheduled to take a vote next week, if there's any sort of sending school or socioeconomic data that is attached to the information that you have on the students that register for the test but don't take it, that might help us, you know, better understand where this gap is, I think that would be immensely helpful.
And if you could try to look at, you know, if you could check from last year by folks on the team of where were these calls coming from, you know, what schools were the students involved, et cetera, that may be very helpful to this committee.
Who showed up for the test but then didn't have documentation.
Okay. Ms. Roberts, I want to just give you a chance to respond to the comments that you've heard from the members.
So I do, we do have information on race, not socioeconomic, so we will pull that out by, in terms of who's showing up but not taking the test. That'll give us some sense in terms of, particularly around non-BPS students, and we will collect data. We do have some anecdotal data. I just didn't want to present it as hard facts because it's not actual hard data, but we'll bring that as well.
Excellent. Do you have the sending school information? Is that part of the registration material?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I think that would be interesting as well.
Excellent. Great. So if you could put that together for us and send it back out, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your back.
Yeah, thank you.
Move on now to public comment and report, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. We have two speakers, Ms. Peggy Wiesenberg and Mr. John Mudd.
Good evening and welcome to what's hopefully going to be a great school year for everyone. Having listened to the reports, I must say I agree with several members of the committee and about that last report and needing more data to focus on our strategic goal, which is and should continue to be getting our BPS kids access to the exam schools. There's one other issue that I think you might explore, which is whether the makeup test is easier than the initial test. I think that is true in some, with some tests. I don't know if that's true with the ISEE, but they're definitely different test questions so that people don't get the questions from kids who've taken the exam and then take it later. So I think that has to play into this as well. But on the bigger picture, I would hope that the chair and the committee could come up with a schedule for the year that you could publish, put up on your website as to when you'll be dealing with different issues that you know come up. I mean, you certainly know the budget stuff in advance and when that's scheduled, but I think you've heard tonight that looming large are, when are we going to hear about the superintendent's plans for grade reconfiguration? When are we going to hear specifics about Build BPS? I was listening tonight and was glad to hear the presentation on the SPED issues from the SPED director, but it wasn't until SPED PAC raised the Build Boston that we heard anything about Build Boston. And what came through at a lot of those community meetings and a lot of the data that's out there on your website with Build BPS is that with this 21st century build out, SPED, where SPED strands are placed and where SPED programs are placed, particularly with the very large segment of our student population having SPED diagnoses and designations, that is going to, or should be guiding the Build BPS. But I, to step back, I do think that calendar would be helpful and to throw into the mix a reminder that we're still waiting for the equity analysis, for the assignment plan and the RFP, and there needs to be reports on a regular basis on some of these, but certainly these should be on the agenda and we should know in advance, hopefully, when the public can expect to hear on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg.
Quickly, I'm sorry Cindy Nielsen is gone because I also want to compliment her and the staff on including the data on the ELL SPED students for the first time. I mean, I think we're getting, you know, a much solider foundation on which to develop our plans and progress for the future, so I appreciate that. But that is only just laying out the foundation. And I think I am concerned, you know, and you would predict from my earlier testimony this evening, that in terms of the presentation, there really, in my head, there wasn't really detailed or explicit discussion of how the achievement gaps between SPED or regular students or between ELL SPED and non-ELL SPED students were going to be reduced. And I think I had expected that by this time, we would be coming to that, that in every one of those presentations, there would be some discussion in that way and not just in the generalities of an impact statement, which frankly wasn't even mentioned tonight. I would encourage you to also consider that as you get presentations from departments like this, you also combine it with at least the material from the Opportunity in the Achievement Gap Implementation Plan, so that when you have a SPED presentation, you also have the SPED Opportunity Achievement Gap Implementation Plan so that you can bring them together. For example, this is a minor, well, I don't know whether it's minor, but there was an issue of overrepresentation. In the implementation plan, it says, yes, we will try to reduce Black and Latino males' referrals to SPED by 15%. It also says, we will, our goal is to reduce ELL referrals to SPED by 15%. And I don't know where that came from. I think there's a, somehow a conflation of those two populations and it certainly, I don't remember it coming out of the ELL Task Force, I know it hasn't come out of the ELL SPED Subcommittee, which I've been privileged to be a part for many years. We don't want overrepresentation, we don't want underrepresentation, we want to get it right. And to have a goal that we're going to reduce something, I think arbitrarily or out of confusion, I think is wrong. So the bigger point is to try and consolidate the presentations, the Opportunity in the Achievement Gap materials, the narrative statements in the Opportunity in the Achievement Gap, the impact statement here, and to be able to look at that as a whole to see, how are we really strategizing to reduce those gaps? Two seconds on the union thing. I appreciate the comment that all the major issues are still on the table. I would just, I think the chair would probably remember back in 2000 when we had Boston United for Children, there was an effort to have public information about what is at stake in the union contract. And I don't think that effort has been made significantly since then, frankly, and I would encourage you as you plan for the next round, for the next two years, to consider how you develop public understanding of what is at stake in union contracts. I know staff assignment is crucial in, you know, for example, ELL SPED students, how do we get students? I know it is crucial in dual-language programs, you know, where you get teachers who, I have been told, teachers who have building rights. I'm sorry, you get the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you very much.
And I was not on the committee 17 years ago.
Okay.
But I actually do
But you were a citizen.
I remember very well the effort that you talked about it, and it was a greater citywide effort to make that happen, right? So, and matter of fact Reverend Grover was extremely involved in that, so.
Mr. O'Neill, that concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any new business from members? Dr. Ariate?
You know, people are going to kill me for saying anything new, but I do, I think that Peggy Wiesenberg has a point in that we do need the listing of, as we committed last year, when we had the retreat of the, of the school committee, we committed to basically receive a listing of what we would be discussing at every meeting. We haven't gotten that, so I was wondering whether we could have it this year for the whole.
Okay, great.
No? Yes?
I said, okay.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions or new business? Thank you. That concludes our business for this evening. The next school committee meeting will take place next Wednesday, September 13th at 6:00 PM. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, second. Looks like unanimous consent. Good night, everybody.